Everyone, let me just get out my papers so I can read the read the statement. Are we ready? Well, welcome to the May 13th study session meeting of the San Luis Coastal Unified School District Board of Trustees. At this time, we'd like to ask those in attendance to please keep your videos off and audio muted unless you're presenting information or speaking in public comment. And of course, for the board and the people that are participating here, you know, you know what to do. We're offering translation services for our Spanish-speaking attendees. To access translation, please click on the globe at the bottom of your screen and then the language. At this time, we'd like to ask if anyone who needs translation could please click on the participants icon at the bottom of your screen and raise your hand.
Si alguien necesita interpretación, por favor oprima el globo teragio que está bajo de la pantalla.
Okay. All right, so again, welcome to everybody. We'll move on. Let's see, we have everyone here as far as I can tell. So we're going to move to public comment right now and public comment related will obviously public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the board? And Mandy, I'm not set up yet for for our chat, so you'll have to help me and see if anybody wants to speak.
No one raised their hand.
Okay, then let's move on to item 4.01 Board Strategic Focus, grades four to six. Adrian, do you want to take it away so we can talk, you know, figure out what order we want the board wants to address these issues?
Absolutely. So Becca, would you mind sharing the timeline slide with us on your screen?
Sorry, one moment.
So, Board members, we sent this to you, I think, on May 5th. At the last session, we discussed how we would like to go forward in our process in order to, by the end of the summer, have some agreed upon goal statements along with your vision, mission, and core principles. And so we outlined this timeline and sent it to all of you that Becca is going to put on her screen. So today is May 13th. And today we have two main things on our agenda. An educational session for the board about fourth through sixth grade and what the district is currently doing at that grade level and ideas for the future for that grade level. And then we're going to have a policy discussion about what we want to see for goals for the future for pre-K through third. That was the group that we talked about at our last session. Now, we have two approaches that we can take today. We can do the education part first with fourth through sixth and hear from staff and ask them questions and discuss. And then move into having our conversation about goals for preschool through third grade. Or we can talk about goals for preschool through third grade first and then do the educational piece for fourth through sixth grade. And Chris and I wanted to pose it to the board to see if you had a preference of which we do first. Either seems to be able to work with staff in their schedules today.
Right, thank you. So before we have that quick discussion and make that decision, my thought was, I mean, obviously, we could go either way. So if we have the fourth through sixth grade presentation from the staff, that might help us frame what needs to happen in pre-K through third grade. Or we can discuss pre-K through third grade, and then that might help us understand more about what fourth through sixth. It, I'd like to see what the board's interest is and then we can just go from there. So I'd like some board comment on that, which we prefer to do. The fourth through sixth grade education session presentation from the staff first, or the pre-K grade discussed draft policy goals, which would kind of take what we discussed last time and move it forward. So I'm, I I'm not seeing anybody from the board right now.
Catherine and Eve both have comments.
Okay, so let's see, who had their hand, can you, Eve, I see you had your hand up first, then Catherine. Eve, you're muted.
I know I'm muted. These fingers can't move fast enough.
Okay.
I just can go with either one, but, you know, I think that an outgrowth, I like the feeling of an outgrowth rather than starting at the end and working back to the beginning type of thing. I like going, this is just me personally. I'm trying to think what's best now for everybody, which would be either way. I mean, I can see the value of what you're saying, but I think finishing up what we did last time and then going on with the fourth through sixth. So starting with the pre-K through third and going on to the fourth through sixth would be my preference.
Okay, Catherine?
And I was going to suggest the opposite. Just to make that make it interesting. I feel like it's helpful to know what we're aiming for for the younger grades. So once we can establish this is what we're doing at fourth through sixth, it would help me in any case to know how do we prepare those students for that particular
Okay. Evelyn, you do, you're muted, but you are giving a thumbs up. So are you suggesting we do the fourth through sixth first or the K through three first?
Well, I can go either way, but I do. When you started to mention about, you know, working backwards, kind of like a backwards mapping, you know, where we're, where we, where we're headed and start with that and then go back and then what Catherine is saying. So that would be my preference, but whatever the board would like.
And remember, when we, when we talk about policy goals for fourth grade, that won't be until next session. So we're not talking about those today. So you'll still have time to think about the conversation you had with preschool through third grade before you do that piece of it. So it's really just whether mindset-wise, you want to talk about fourth grade, then sixth grade, and then change gears and do third grade after.
Ellen, what's your preference?
Yeah, I just, I have a question because I, you know, I know that, that we've devoted, the board has devoted a lot of time to the first through third, and I want to make sure that we don't get hung up on fourth through sixth and then start thinking, oh, I should have changed my earlier things now, you know, and I, perhaps that comes from, I'm just, I'm more of a linear thinker, so I suppose, I understand the advantages of backward mapping when you're plugging in for kind of a calendar. But I guess for my personal thought process, starting at the beginning and moving forward, rather than going forward a little and then going backward and then going to middle school and then going to, you know, it just, to me, it feels a little jumpy. So, but, you know, I'll go along with what makes sense to, to staff and everyone else.
Mark or Marilyn? You're both. Go ahead, Marilyn, I'm sorry.
I can go either way on it. For, I guess, you know, I don't have a really strong preference, but on first blush, I sort of recapping what we decided on K through three was, for me, I think it might sort of set the process and then it'd be easier to understand what comes next.
Okay, Mark? And Mark, you're muted.
Thanks, Chris. I'm, I'd like to finish up the pre-K three.
So it looks like, looks like more board members would prefer to do the pre-K three and then follow it up with a fourth through sixth presentation. So that's what let's do, okay? We're good to go with that?
Yeah, and so I'm going to ask Becca to bring that slide back up of the timeline. So before we kick off and converse about pre-K through third, I just wanted to give everybody just a quick overview again about where we're at and where we want to go. So again, we're at May 13th. We're going to be discussing fourth through sixth and preschool through third grade. Thus far, the board has weighed in on mission, vision, core principles, and preschool through third grade goals. On June 7th, we have a nice, long day together to talk about middle school and high school, as well as the draft vision, mission, and core principles that staff have created based on the feedback from the board.
And Adrian, Adrian, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I, I, you know, we've been very busy here at the DO and I haven't had a chance to circle back to you. But one of the things about June 7th is that, as you know, that's been reserved as a the annual board retreat where they typically talk about strategic goals, priorities for the upcoming year. And so what's going to need to happen on that June 7th date will be we're going to do sort of outreach to individual board members and get consensus as to what they want to cover on that day, which could include some of this, as we, you and I discussed. But it may be that a sizable chunk of that day will be dedicated to, quite frankly, strategic direction. And so, and what the board wants to kind of cover as it relates to my evaluation. So, and the goals they set for me in there. So I think a lot of these are tangential. I mean, they work, work with each other. But I just wanted to put that out there that we might need to pivot a bit on that day.
Okay, well, um, then you have some time potentially reserved on June 10th to continue discussing goals. Our, we would like to have a draft of the final document on July 15th for you to discuss. That would include the vision, mission, core principles, and goal, all the goals for the different grade spans. And for then the goal of having final approval on August 17th. Dr. Prater has a number of new staff leadership coming onboard this coming school year. And so it would be great to have these guiding principles ready to go to orient that staff. And Eric, I don't know if you want to say anything more about that ultimate kind of goal you'd like for this document and that process.
Yeah, and our board's very familiar with the, the number of changes at the leadership positions in our district starting next year. So this summer, I've put together a leadership institute for the, the new administrators to get them on the same page, to get them oriented to how we function as a district and what our priorities are. And I'd love to be able to give them, even if it's in draft form, the strategic vision, mission, and guiding principles, and then align those to the, the priorities that have been established in the L cap, as well as the very likely goals that we're seeing emerge K-12. So with that, and that's typically what we do on June 7th, is we identify those primary goals, those priorities. And it allows my staff to then backward map the whole year so that we create our board planning calendar, we finalize our master planning calendar. So all of those things I intend to provide to our new leaders so that before they meet with their staffs at their sites, they have a really good idea of how we function as a district. And that way, they can be, you know, we'll set them up for success. As a new principal to a district, their minds are racing right now about things they would like to do, how they would like to do them. And I want to get in front of that to make sure that they're not having to undo some, some things that they want to bring here. But might be, might not be a priority for us. So with that, this work here, I'm trying super hard to have a parallel track so that I can then feed our new administrative team in the, I have my, my leadership institute with our new administrators July 13th and 14th. And I, I feel pretty strongly that I can give them the gist of what it is the board wishes to accomplish in the out year with some adjustments leading up to August. But by and large, this is really important to me. What we're talking about here is very important to me so that we can get our new administrative team, our new leaders positioned for success and focus.
Thank you. So does anybody have any questions about this process before we go into our conversation about goals for the lower grades? Eve?
You know, Adrian, one thing that Mandy tells me is to, I see, I get, I'm assuming that you can see everybody who the board members, and I'll, I'll let you recognize board members. I can't see everybody. So two things, I mean, Adrian, I'm happy to have you do that. If board members want to, we can also have, ask you to raise your hand and that way you'll be able to be recognized and Mandy can do that too. Okay?
Sure, I can see everybody right now. So I can do my best at that and maybe Mandy can back me up if I don't, I miss somebody.
Yeah, I don't think Mandy can see everybody. One thing I do want everybody to know is I did receive, I just received public comment from, from someone. And so I will need to read that and I think it would be best if I read that prior to the actual conversation we're about to have.
Sure, so we'll take questions on process going forward and then we'll do public comment and then we'll have a conversation. Yeah, Eve?
I saw a question mark after June 7th. Did I miss?
Yeah, that was a typo. Sorry, I noticed that just now too. And I didn't notice on the last draft, so I apologize for that.
Oh, no, not, not trying to correct you. I just thought maybe we were going to have it on a different day and I'm marking my calendar, so it would be important.
Yes, yes, the seventh, the seventh and the 10th are the two days, is my understanding from the district for June.
Yeah, that, those two days are, as you can imagine, are going to be really important and I know it's quite a lot of work. You, you board members have been working your tails off and I so appreciate it. Those two days are going to be critical in order for us to get ourselves positioned for the summer planning that we need. So I appreciate that in advance.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm not seeing any board members with hands up, so Chris, do you want to read public comment?
Sure, yes, thank you. This is from Lena Egan. "As I understand it, these strategic sessions are to create short-term and long-term structural and systematic changes that reflect 21st century learning and achievement post-pandemic. The February session detailed the most critical actions to consider for 2021, 2022 in order to address COVID-19 impacts. The March session referred back to the strategic initiatives from 10 years ago and looked forward with 10-year budget projections. As these sessions have moved into grade-level discussions, I'm unclear if the focus is just on critical actions for the 2021, 2022 school year or also on the long-term vision. With respect to the fourth through sixth grade discussion, there is no agenda item regarding opportunities for advanced learners. Advanced learners' needs must be addressed in the context of extending the long-term core principle of all means all. A particular concern is the opportunity for advanced learners who are all, who are ready and want the challenge to embark on the accelerated math pathway. Sixth graders must meet certain test criteria to be placed into accelerated math in seventh grade. This accelerated math pathway enables students to take AP Calculus AB in the 12th grade as the grade-level pathway reaches pre-calculus in 12th grade. Some suggestions for strategic review. Consider math compaction earlier by compacting sixth-grade math and seventh-grade math into sixth-grade math like other school, California school districts. This allows students on their accelerated math pathway sequence to reach AP Calculus BC in 12th grade. Two, make the SLCUSD Accelerated Mathematics Course Sequence document published on Parent Resources webpage, www.slcusd.orgParetResources.php in May 22nd. May 2020, more widely known, for example, reachable on SLCUSD's school site webpages, referenced in letters to the sixth-grade parents regarding test criteria, referenced in incoming middle school and high school parent info nights. And three, in parallel to the UCs moving forward towards SAT, ACT, test optional, test blind, considering expanding the placement criteria for accelerated math pathway beyond two tests to identify students that demonstrate aptitude and commitment to mastering math material but do not test well."
Thank you. So we're going to move into our preschool through third grade discussion. And when we look at the goal, draft goals that we have for the board to consider, I think you'll see it's broken up into short-term goals for the next school year and then long-term goals for the next decade. So, so the goal is to have district goals for both of those time periods. Mark?
Mark, you're muted.
Sorry, I'll have to start to use this space bar. I'm just a little confused. Are you, are you going to go into long and short-term goals for the entire district or just for pre-K and three?
So what we're going to talk about now is preschool through three. So if Becca can bring up the document that you got earlier this week. So you'll remember last time we shared with you a couple-page document that was a synopsis of what we heard from you in survey form about this grade span. And so we took that feedback that was, you know, broad and very detailed and tried to make some broad statements that would be district-level goals that the board would adopt. So it's not, you know, again, we're trying to stay at a high policy level here. If we get super detailed into curriculum, that's more for the staff to decide how to carry out the goals. But at a high level, what are your goals for this grade level? And, and we did, Becca, we did write a couple general statements that you got as well. And the reason behind that was some of these would impact the preschool through third grade level as well as other grades, right? So I pulled them out as general because they are pretty general, not necessarily grade span-specific. And they've also come up a number of times in our conversations thus far in the first three sessions. So while we are focusing on preschool through third grade goals, I wanted to make sure that you saw these as well because they do impact this grade span. So I'm trying to think of how best to show all of it on the screen.
Adrian, do you want the all grades and the pre-K to three?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on.
Can everybody see those?
And does everybody have this document, Adrian, if they need it?
Yes, they should. So you can pull it up on your individual screens if it's too hard to view what she has here. So we've heard from you a number of times that making sure that we have adequate counseling services for students as we return in the short term is going to be very important, as well as looking for opportunities. I don't know if this is the right document, Becca. Because how about? Yeah, well, if, yeah.
Guys, there were two cents.
Here, if you, if, why don't you stop sharing and I will share the doc, find that, and I can share it if.
Sorry, the problem is that you can't share a screen on this Zoom. You have to just share a specific document. So I just pulled up the other document, but you couldn't see it. Do you want me to share the other one?
Uh, yeah, it should say all grades, short-term, 2021 through 2022 school year. Is that?
I just have to pick that one specifically, so.
Okay, sorry. Sorry for that. That should look correct now. Um, so again, social emotional services for students as we return to in-person learning. Opportunities to promote academic acceleration next school year. Building creative, hands-on, engaging experiences through K through eight with the assistance of the Education Foundation. Things we've been talking about and hearing you were interested in. Having a robust summer program. Long-term, again, looking at the achievement gap and closing that gap through targeted support. Developing strong visual and performing arts programs at the elementary and secondary level that came up in our conversation with the early, early grades. But it does, you know, span across elementary and secondary. Developing opportunities for more teacher collaboration and mentorship, that's come up in our conversations. As well as, these are two that the staff added that I, I put in here for your consideration. Comprehensive summer experience and the comprehensive dual immersion program going into the middle school grade levels. Then if you scroll down, we have our short-term and long-term pre-K through third grade goals. So what we heard coming out of your feedback, again, for the short-term, targeted literacy instruction, so important to help these students in particular with accelerating their literacy skills. Creating opportunities for teacher collaboration, especially in order to understand where the students are starting from, from this year into next, that came out of that conversation. And the staff are suggesting, you know, this could be done through professional learning communities or early release Wednesdays. So for the long-term, the next decade, working towards a full-day standard schedule for kindergarten across the district. We had a lot of discussion around that in our last session. Assess changes to the TK and preschool offerings to develop programming further. Ensure alignment of schedules that work for working families and the, their ability to help with kindergarten preparedness. And then evaluate opportunities for more collaborative interdisciplinary learning with peers. So we had some conversation about that as well. So this is just a first draft of trying to capture the high-level essence of what you, we heard from you during the last session. Would love your feedback on this. Do these resonate with you? Do these feel like they are the right goals? Is there something that's missing? Eve, I know you had a comment that you wanted to share. You're muted.
Yeah. Everybody is, everybody is muted because we're getting too much ambient noise, so you'll all have to unmute yourselves by using the space bar.
Thank you. I figured that one out. Thank you. So I believe the district would be benefited if we could put a, an overt parent-school connection training program so that the parents are involved in a structured type of way in these crucial early grades. My understanding is that a strong school district is created when the parents are involved. And what, what better way to get them involved than from the beginning? And especially since they're making, the kids are making the transition from the nest to the institution. I believe that we need to have an overt program, a structure for incorporating parents.
So Becca's going to take notes on this document while we talk. So Becca, if you wouldn't mind going into the long-term goals for pre-K through third and, and add a comment about ensuring that there's a strong parent education, parent connection component to the pre-K through Eve through kindergarten, or are you thinking farther beyond that?
Earlier, yeah, and.
Preschool through kindergarten, yeah.
And first, perhaps, and could be included. I know second, having been a second-grade teacher for many years, I know that the kids are ready to fly as far as being in school. So I would say through first.
Other comments? Yeah, Chris?
Wouldn't Eve's suggestion about this parent education component, it seems to me that might be more of, I'm not opposed to it, more of a district, either a district-wide short or long-term goal. Because we, it's, you know, it seems to me, we, we want to get, we, we need to start this in preschool and I believe our preschool teachers are already doing it. But I'm, you know, I'm just kind of thinking, this is the kind of thing that, that will involve parents throughout their kid's education. Is this something that would be broadened through all the grades in the district? So I'm just wondering if it would be, like I said, more of a long-term, maybe more of a district long-term goal, which I think would be great. And then the, I'm wondering in the short-term goal, it says invest in targeted literacy. I'd like to hear from the staff why math wasn't included in that. I'd like to hear from the staff why math wasn't included in that. Cause we have this achievement gap, both in literacy and math.
Uh, Eric, do you want Laura to field that? Or do you want to feel that?
My immediate, my, my immediate response to that is that literacy in education terms includes math literacy. So most people think of literacy as reading. However, in educational world, literacy involves all types of, of, of learning, math literacy, science literacy, and, and core literacy of, of reading and writing. So we can clarify that in there and that would be certainly fine with me. But math and, math and English are critical literacy indicators at that age. Rick, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, I would. So I would second what you're saying. You know, we're monitoring both things extremely closely. Now even, and then when we come back in the fall, even more so with increased staff for interventions and, you know, first best instruction. So absolutely that's on the radar.
And Becca, Becca, literacy involves reading and math is what I really wanted to say.
Yeah, parentheses, reading and math.
Yeah, there we go.
Uh, Mark had a comment and then Ellen.
Yep. So I want to go back first to the comment about families. I, I agree a hundred percent. I'm wondering, um, Eve, if in our second, let me see. There's a bullet, no, just in pre K.
Pre K through third.
There's a bullet that talks, yeah, a long-term alignment of schedules with working families and their utility in kinder preparedness. Does that, would, would we be able to cover it there or do we need to expand that?
That's just about schedules and accommodating that families cannot participate to me, you know.
Well, I, yeah, that's my language because I was trying to capture a bunch of thoughts in there about the, the idea of reevaluating TK and preschool, right? And so what came up in our conversations for reasons to kind of retake a dive, a deeper dive at looking at that were a couple of things. Cause you wanted to maybe expand that programming. You also talked a lot about making the schedules work for working families. And then there was conversation about using preschool and TK as this kind of pathway to kinder. So like not looking at them separately, but looking at them as a connected kind of three levels. And so that's what I was trying to get at when I said utility to kinder preparedness. I know not super clear language.
So your reference is specifically to scheduling because the way I read this.
Well, it's more like curriculum.
I'm sorry. I just want to finish the thought.
Yeah.
The way you saw this was specifically to scheduling as opposed to what Eve is talking about. And that's their, I mean, their ability to help and their, their ability, their utility in the kindergarten progress. So they're taking part in, they're part of. Is that, so I, I read it entirely differently. I mean, I understand the schedules that work for families. But when you have the comma and that seemed to me as a second thought, a second.
Yeah, it is a second thought, but it was more about the curriculum being connected than getting the parents involved in the curriculum. Does that make sense? Which it, that can also be part of that conversation of assessing changes. Cause, cause I figured the board is going to tell staff, we want you to come up with a plan we, that you think works to meet these goals for TK through, I mean, through preschool and TK and come back to us. Like, I don't think in these conversations, we're gonna come up with like exactly what the district is going to do with preschool and TK going forward. But clearly it's of very big interest to the board to have the district assess that and come up with a plan for you, right? Um, and especially given Chris's thought about wanting to see greater parent connection at all grade levels. It, it might be worth having its own goal statement.
Sure. Thank you. And then, and then to speak to the, um, to the math on the short term. I understand the need to accelerate. Does that term in, in, in terms of what you and staff are saying? Is that accelerate from where they are or to accelerate beyond what they normally would get in K three?
I'm going to let Eric answer that.
Yeah, Mark, this is a, a term that we're using very deliberately. Mainly because the research right now is, is very clear that when you focus on the word remediate, it actually does not catch the kids up to their grade level expectation. So the, the focus is on the term accelerate, which means they need to get from where they are to where the grade level standard is in a very specific period of time. So it changes the framework. It changes the strategy of how we look at children and how they're learning. And so the word accelerate is a more appropriate term when you talk about closing the gap, the learning gap. It also applies for what it's worth. It also applies across the K-12 spectrum. So that kids that are, are capable of expanding their, their trajectory of learning, it applies to them as well. So we're not just looking at the standard of the grade level. If kids capacity is to go beyond that grade level or go beyond where they, um, they currently are. So, um, if you look at the, the Rick do four work on PLCs, it's based on four questions. Question one is what do we expect kids to know and be able to do? The second question is what do we do? How do we know? How do we know that the kids are actually learning what they're supposed to be learning? And then the third question is what do we do when they don't learn it? Well, we create a trajectory of achievement, accelerating their learning to get them where they need to be. And then the fourth question, which is oftentimes left behind in educational world is what do we do when the kids already get it? They're already there. What do we do? And that's why from there we push kids forward. We enrich, we deepen their understanding of, of that learning. And so we're looking at the third question in terms of MTSS. The fourth question is also appropriate for our kids who get it, who already get the grade level standards. What are we going to do for those kids? And that's why we are embracing this idea of hands-on, project-based exploration enrichment. So those, that's a really important piece to understanding the term accelerate. And I, I hope that helps.
No, actually it makes it more confusing for me. So now we have a word accelerate, which means two entirely different things. One is again, see where they are and quickly bring them up to grade level or beyond. And the other is we have kids that can do it. It was, there were many things within that definition. I'm, I'm hoping we can find a, a way to say, and I think we say it down below and I'm just not, you know, how do we link those? Where students are starting from. Better understand where they're starting from, but up above it's, it, even in your, even in your definition, it was accelerate beyond. It, it, it's covering so many things. I, I, is this a document that it, Ms. Harris, that this would actually go to the public that they would see? Would they have questions about the term accelerate? I kind of get it now, Eric, but it's, it's just a really strong word.
Yeah, Mr. Buckman, I, what I'm, and Laura Storm would be someone who, if she's on this line, she can weigh in. This is a really important concept in the research of how kids are actually catching up. How they, if, if you have a, um, a remediation mindset to remediate kids who have, are not at grade level. What happens is, is our framework for getting them the learning they need oftentimes falls short. It doesn't get them where they need to go. So there's a lot of terminology that we need to explain. But accelerate is the, my, is the actual appropriate term if you're going to close the gap between those that are achieving at grade level and those that are not. That's the appropriate term.
So I have Laura on it to add a couple of extra thoughts potentially.
And I appreciate it. Can before we do that, it, for me, it might help if we just flip these two bullets. Because the first one addresses a, a real immediate concern or short-term goal, which is assess where the students are. And then the second one is the term accelerate. So I'd love to hear from this.
So Laura, and then I think Chris wanted to say something.
Um, sure. As far as, you know, I've been doing a lot of digging into kind of this coming back from the pandemic. Sort of framework and, and all of our, our trusted experts are saying acceleration, it's about acceleration. Because like Dr. Prater said, when you're talking about remediation, a lot of times you unintentionally lower standards and set low expectations. And so we want to continue to have the high ceiling. Um, and a lot of times I think of it as, you know, we have students that are, you know, doing right what they need to be doing on grade level. And they're like walking through the year and then we have those that are not, and they need to run through the year to catch up. And so acceleration is like that running, right? So yes, we are being very careful with the language that we use. The other thing that's starting to pop up as I'm kind of a, a terminal of this is making learning leaps. So you could think of it in that, in that regard too. So it's just the, it's just the mindset and what happens when we talk remediation that we bring that ceiling down. And we don't even mean to, but it's just something that educators do.
And I, I get it. I love it. I love the concept. I just, I mean, we've all talked about understand where students are and then move forward. I get the fact that you're talking about acceleration. This, this whole invest in targeted literacy instruction, K three, K three grade students, period. This whole concept of acceleration, it seems like it's a long-term goal. I mean, we, do we, do we have programs in place now? Or are we going to be putting into place new programs?
Well, my understanding is that there's, yeah, there's a number of resources that they're going to bring into the classrooms in 2021 to 2022 to help. Since we just had a very extraordinarily different year. And so to really, you know, get at this right away. Next school year. So I have a number of hands from board members. I, and I know Ellen had hers up earlier. I just want to check, do you, do you guys have a comment beyond this conversation about accelerate? Or did you want to talk about this before we move on? So, uh, Chris has a comment about it.
I just wanted to, to, to think about the word accelerate. It seems to me, I think Eric and Mark and Laura, what you're talking about is there's, there's educational terminology and an educational understanding of what accelerate means. And then there's what, what a broader understanding of it may mean, which may not fully lead to comprehension of the, the educational function of it. So if this doc, to me, if this document is, is to primarily be used for us internally, I'm good with accelerate, given what Dr. Prater and Laura have said. But I think that we will need to create something that is more explanatory for the parents. And I would just leave it at that. I don't think, and, and to Mark's comment though, I don't think acceleration, it may be a long-term goal, but I think it's an important short-term goal right now because it's what we've been talking about closing the achieve. This is another way of talking about closing the achievement gap. And so it really to me is a short-term goal.
Yeah. And we will, I'm sure the district, if they post this on the website for public consumption after the fact that, you know, each one of these goal statements can have some descriptive language with it to explain it to the public.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, so I know Marilyn and Ellen wanted to say something.
Okay, Marilyn.
Thanks, Ellen. I, you know, I really agree with Mark on his, the confusion around that term accelerate. And when we say to grade level and beyond, it's almost as though we're talking about two different objectives. And I wonder if it is possible to somehow explain the difference in this. Because we have the objective of, of, of students who have suffered during the pandemic and bringing them up to grade level. And then we also, when we say to grade level and beyond, then we're talking about what, what do we do for, how can we assist accelerated learners? To me, it's, um, it's twofold as it's currently written.
Thank you. So Ellen and then Evelyn.
I, I agree with, you know, I think that, that being careful. I, I agree with Chris that we are indeed, this is kind of an internal document at this stage, but that there will be at some point more laypeople reading it and our, our clarity will be important to avoid rehashing this sort of confusion we're working through right now. As well as, you know, being clear to be able to address the students who have never been in a, at all, a preschool or pre-learner or maybe childcare, any sort of situation to the, some of the students Lena is addressing in her comments. To those who are indeed a kind of functioning, entering school at grade level or, or even a little beyond. And what do we do to keep them engaged? I think those are both really important points. And then in terms of a, a parent involvement, it, I at least would benefit, I know we do so much. And I know we're always trying to think of new ways and greater ways to do outreach and that that's important to continue that. But, um, I, I would benefit from maybe just having a, a brief description at some point from Eric or Laura or somebody. As we go into the, as the school year, individual administrators are planning, planning their calendars to be reminded that we do family literacy nights, we do family math nights, we do, um, PTA, we do before and after school things. We do these fundraisers. We have our opportunities and kind of knowing what opportunities may remain in place post pandemic in terms of parent abilities to feel welcome to be in touch with, with their teachers, their student's teacher and things like that. You know, I, we, I just want to remind people that I think we do a pretty admirable job. It's not to say that there's not room or space to do more, but also with having respect for the wishes of parents. Some parents simply don't choose to be involved and that that is okay also. That it's not something we are requiring, we can require their kids to be in public education or at least make that available. But we cannot require parents to be involved. So I think that making as many opportunities. And Mark, I'm not, I see you shaking your head. I know you're not going down that path, but that opportunities are important. But that, you know, we are as welcoming as we can be and provide as many opportunities as we can. And knowing what some of those are, because the board likes to participate in some of those as well. So thank you.
I think Evelyn had something to add and then Chris and then Eve.
Um, I was just going to make a quick comment about the acceleration, which I agree with what Ellen just said and Chris said about that. There's going to be, need to be a, a public document versus internal. But what Laura said really struck home with me regarding, and I think she was referring to this whole process post pandemic is really not necessarily going to be linear. And in education, we tend to think in terms of that. But really meeting where students are is going to be kind of a, you know, it's, it's going to require a great deal of differentiation on the part of the district as a whole, because we're going to have students who have, are going to need to be pushed beyond because they've met everything versus students. Even students who, um, have had some issues, they're not all going to have the same issue. And some of them may be fine in certain areas and not. So it's kind of that leaps in some areas and other areas. It's going to be, um, more intense instruction and others above and beyond. So I think that, um, that, that realization that we are going to have to have two different documents for public consumption. Because when public sees sometimes acceleration, sometimes that can unbeknownst to us. It can create anxiety for some parents and for some students like, oh my gosh, you know, it was a difficult year. So, um, you know, what do we really mean by that? And with regards to the parent education. And with regards to the parent education, I kind of fall both with Ellen and Mark, because what Ellen is saying is we do have a lot of opportunities. What I hear Mark saying is more kind of um and I saw this at a CSBA workshop that we went that I went to. And it was more of a targeted parent kind of learning about education and how that's change and the expectation for kind of targeted subgroups. And it was almost kind of like a a little mini academy of, you know, why back to school nights are important? What happens and, you know, to look forward to. So I kind of see those as two kind of very different focuses that perhaps we, you know, need to continue to say this is the things that we do offer. But there is a subset of parents who might be benefit from a more targeted opportunities to learn about our school school system, American school system, or how it's changed from when you went to school and things like that. So that's my only comment.
Thank you. Uh, so I think I said Chris and then Eve, right?
So just just quickly, Evelyn, I think what you're talking about is some districts do things that are they they basically refer to them as parent universities. And I know that Fresno State, for example, I just got something Fresno State and that's something that they're interested in doing. But I did want to ask the staff, given the governor's, the latest news out of Sacramento with the governor really having an interest in expanding TK and perhaps even preschool offerings. Is that a goal that we need to be thinking about? Or is that just something that the that that the state will say to us? And we'll just do it and fold it into what we're doing here? Sorry.
Rick, go ahead.
I think that's absolutely something that we need to get out ahead of. When the original TK law came into effect, we started our TK programs before we were required to do so. And, you know, I think that was smart and it just sets us up for success when the when eventually we have to do that in a more in depth fashion. And I think the same is true here. You know, we're taking a very fresh look at our TK, pre K and Kinder programs. I've met with staff from all three of those levels in the last within the last two weeks and had long conversations about going to full day programs and changes that we can make to to improve these programs. We in preschool, for example, we have declined an enrollment. And we lost our Smith program. This current year, we didn't have a Hawthorne program. And all of us are in agreement that we can't believe that we can't fill up a free, high quality preschool program because the need out there is tremendous. So we're moving staff around. We have Fiona coming into town to the Hawthorne program. Sunshine Frawley is going to move from Monarch Grove to Baywood program. And we're flying the Monarch Grove position currently. And then I'm meeting with them on Monday to talk about, you know, a full day program and what that looks like. The other only other thing I would add is that pre K has state licensing and so there's a lot of limitations. And, uh, you know, we kind of joke about it, but the one really limiting thing is napping. Is I wouldn't think napping would be that complicated. You know, you lay down and rest, but apparently it is. And we have to have cots and there has to be laundry service and quite a few other things. So we're looking at what we can do. Could we change our preschool programs to be TK programs? And that would give us more flexibility. So these conversations are happening and we'll have some things in place for next year, you know, with your direction.
And and you know, everyone, I just want to say, Rick, I appreciate all that you've done behind the scenes to build awareness with our 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 preschool TK and kindergarten teachers. I know that that has not been easy, but I know you're doing it. I'm also one of, I'm just so excited that the board has brought this up and and the idea of of a full day program for preschool TK and K, for me, is a matter of equity. It's a matter of responding to what parents need to to get back to work when they have young children. It's a giant savings with with childcare as well as, quite frankly, our children need this this time to to learn the things they need to learn, especially as we come out of COVID. That's step one. And then step two, I really appreciate the comments I've heard today about onboarding parents. I really think it's essential. And I just want to highlight a couple of things that 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 have been going on behind the scenes. One is, as you know, Sally Ames is retiring and she oversees the Parent Participation Preschool Program. It's been with us for forty years and and oversees adult education. Well, we brought in Leslie O'Connor to oversee the secondary component of that. And Rick Mayfield, as the elementary director, will then take over the the early childhood component of parent participation. Mr. Unger shared with me the Parent University Program from Fresno State. I greatly appreciate that. And so what I envision, especially as we start massaging these short and long term goals, is that we do indeed, while as Ms. Shepper said, we absolutely do quite a lot of things for our families and outreach at the early levels. However, there are some disconnects and it's not necessarily an efficient, well designed system where parents out who are outside of the system, they they really don't know when they come in, what to expect. And we can do a better job at that. So one of the things that Mr. Mayfield will be working on as we take on that parent participation piece is to expand it. Expand it in terms of onboarding parents who 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 might really benefit from understanding their role as parents in the school system as a support, as a way to support their child's success and and become true partners with us. So for that, I'm excited. And I do think that should in fact be a long term target for our district. Just wanted to add that.
Thanks. Eve wanted to make comment and then Mark did. And I'm just want to say that I I'm looking at the time and I know we want to have enough time to do fourth through sixth grade. So maybe we can take the next ten minutes to finish up this conversation and then hopefully move forward. And obviously, you can continue to send thoughts and comments on this as we go forward.
Yeah, I just want to appreciate what Eric said, also Mr. Mayfield, as fleshing out what the reason why I brought it up in the first place about making it a structured and overt part of our program is certainly we're not requiring parents to participate. That would not ever come up in my mind. And certainly, we do have parent student enrichment evenings. I've led many of those myself going, you know, into the evening unpaid time to bring about a parent school and student connection. And and also, by the way, bilingually. But I'm thinking more of parents helping in class, like Mr. Mayfield talked about the napping. These are things that are a homeschool connection. That's why I did bring out and originally this early part as a structure in itself. It goes along with what Mr. Mayfield said about the expanded day, the full day preschool TK and K is responding to parents' needs. And now we're talking about onboarding parents. I'm wondering if we could even go so far as to call them parents as paraeducators. Because we do have some parents as paraeducators, but that means they'll know, let me give an example. They'll know that when the teacher is presenting a lesson, they're not to be interacting with a child on the side in a sidebar conversation. Those are just some basic things that they could go through and learn a lot more than that if somebody were able to give them, as Mr. Prater said, what to expect when they come in, some basic training. So that would perhaps take care of those disconnects that he referred to and give us a really good long term goal. Certainly, we want parents at every level, but it's going to look like a different structure at every level. Parents are not going to be helping with kids with naps in high school. Obviously, we're going to have to have things look different according to that block of early childhood and on up.
Thank you. I'm sorry, um, Mark, Becca, I think, has a process thing, so I'm gonna let her jump in and then and then you.
Thank you. Sorry, you guys. Um, I didn't quite capture the note about getting ahead of the state with preschool. And I just got a little lost on that one. If someone could help me.
And when the original TK law was passed several years back, Becca, we started before we started with the TK program before we were required to do so.
Right. I'm sorry. No, I just mean like, what should I put in the notes as far as what was the point relevant to the goal?
I think we're saying we want to keep it as a goal, that we want to look at this before the state comes down and tells the district what to do. That they still want to assess how they want to change that program and make it a potentially full day and and to allow more kids to enroll. Okay, Mark.
Yeah. So just to just to start another topic, and it may be need to go somewhere else. But what I'm not seeing here is a short term or a long term is how do we salvage the value of that smaller class size when we were doing AMPM? And the teachers were saying to me when I visited, I have kids that are raising their hands and participating that never participated. And I just I just hate to see this not part of the 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 it's not remediation. In fact, none of us have said it, the recovery or acceleration that's being talked about. So I don't know if this is the right place, but I just I just I just don't want to lose sight of that.
So maybe as a as a short term goal, um, looking at how the district can use resources to continue to have smaller class sizes or smaller class coke, um, small group activities to, yeah.
But but I think the key to it, because we don't have enough classrooms, is is looking at that modified school day. So I I don't, I I appreciate these captures, but also the half day schedule was just incredible. Thank you.
Um, and and you would like that under short term and long term?
I I'm not even sure whether it's it's here or whether it goes district wide, but, you know, I I this is where I added it.
Yep, yep. Okay, thank you. Evelyn.
Um, a couple of things. One, um, I I would I would push back a little bit on what Mark is saying regarding the you know, the half day, not not necessarily smaller classes. I'm hearing that we're going to have smaller class sizes in general across the district. And I've heard from teachers that they're very excited about that. So but a a half day schedule really impacts the ability of students to grab hold of the learning that they need to learn, peer collaboration, enrichment opportunities. But um, one thing that I would look at is, I I'm just a couple of quick things. Under the short term goal where it says build creative hands on engaging learning experiences for students K through eight in partnership. I'm just wondering if we even need to say partnership. And the reason why I say that is because the foundation is an incredible resource and is it is supportive and has been supportive. But, you know, looking at Student Senate, parent comments across the board beginning, they're looking at it almost kind of independent. They want to see it not and it it feels like if we tie it to partnership, that it's limited, that if the it doesn't quite work out with the foundation or that it's not really what parents and students are asking for, which is that even if we didn't have a foundation, this is an expectation. So I don't know quite how to word that. Because the foundation has been incredibly supportive and continues to be, and that's a primary goal. But I would like to see it, you know, somehow phrased, um, you know, with and also independent.
So we could take it out of that and the sentence at K through eight, period. And then this could incorporate camp opportunities, summer experiences, field trips, da, 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 da. In, you know, standalone or in partnership with San Luis Costa.
Yeah, I think it's really important that, I mean, the foundation is is an amazing organization, has really supported. It just struck to me the wording when we're looking at the Student Senate. And I don't want to be labor this and parents continued asking for hands on learning. It's been, I think it's been on the LCAP for the last six years. So that's that's my only comment about that. And then I do have a comment about the dual immersion. The one thing I wanted to say regarding the comprehensive dual immersion language, that's a long term goal. I'm wondering if we could possibly add something to the short term goal. And the reason why I'm I'm looking at that or is is that because the and I I think Ms. Shepper has mentioned this about with the pandemic and the DL for our dual immersion, particularly for our new newly established dual immersion on the coast and also in town for earliest learners, if we could have particular attention in that short term next year for those early grades and dual immersion, you know, they're establishing, you know, critical literacy connections. And so a real eyes on um goal, because if that's a long term goal, what is that short term goal? You know, that kind of addresses that.
So Becca, if you wanted to go down to pre K through third and put in a short term goal of specifically looking at the dual immersion programs and advancing literacy in those programs.
Particularly for the younger grades, you know.
Yeah, yeah, for the younger grades who are just entering the program and didn't get as much time this year as they would have normally. And then speaking to the to the short term, just at the upper grade level in the seventh and eighth grade, my understanding and I'll let district folks chime in here. My understanding is that there are going to be new courses this coming school year being offered to help with that, even in the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty school year. I believe that's correct, Rick or Laura, or I know Eric's off camera. There's going to be additional Spanish language courses in seventh and eighth grade in this coming year for.
We're still developing the program at middle schools for Spanish language. But we did pass new courses that would allow us to hire bilingual teachers for language arts for, uh, you know, other content areas to give us the flexibility, you know, when the ninety ten students move up through the middle school. So at Laguna, for example, um, you know, John Calandro, the principal there is looking at hiring, you know, bilingual staff for language arts so that we could offer a bilingual language arts program for students to continue their dual immersion experience. So, yes.
Chris Jones is also moving there next year. So, yeah, to Adrian, to answer your question, yes, right? So they.
Yeah. Um, Mark.
Yeah, I I need to fully support Evelyn on removing the foundation from this. We have partnerships with a lot of groups. CTE brings in business, PTA has programs that they sponsor. CTE in itself sponsors program. San Luis Costa Foundation is just amazing and really stepped up to the plate during the pandemic. But I didn't see this in their mission and vision as as actually paying for ongoing programs in in implementing them. You know, coming up with an idea where to where to where to donate money as opposed to as opposed to saying, you know, here's a here's a program we'll fund. And if I I just, there are just too many other opportunities for partnerships. And I just think it's really limited to include the foundation as the be all and end all.
Does any board member have a problem with us putting a period at the end of the word partnership and erasing the rest of that sentence? Do you understand what I'm saying, Becca? Standalone and a partnership period. And that's the statement. Eve, are you are Eve, are you saying you have a problem with that?
I just have a suggestion. Couldn't we say the foundation and other partnerships? Because I know the I innovate program is a really important part of the direction of the school district.
Um, Mark and then Chris.
Well, I again, I think we I think we're limiting ourselves by by focusing on the foundation. And I don't want it to maybe appear that other groups now are not not needed, not welcome. I mean, for years, the PTA has stepped up to the plate. For years, the booster clubs, for example, have stepped up to the plate. I think and in partnerships captures it. The foundation is a separate organization. Just my just my feelings. I just think.
Yeah. And and remember, when when we when the school district posts this document for public consumption, you can have some descriptive language for each one of these goals. You can talk about the organizations maybe more in detail. you can have some descriptive language for each one of these goals. You can talk about the organizations maybe more in detail that you do have partnerships with. It's because I understand people who want to honor that strong partnership that you do have with that organization. Chris, did you want to?
Yeah, I I just wanted to to throw this out as a thought. Um, we do have a special relationship with the foundation. But we also want to encourage partnerships with other with other community organizations, as Mark said, PTA, booster clubs. Who knows? Who knows who is going to want to help support the school district? So I'm wondering if we have it something about with partnerships and then a separate one relating to our or talking about our relationship with the foundation itself. Because the foundation is is, you know, key and um, and we again, we I think we do have a unique relationship with them. So I I would just put that out there.
Okay. So um, we have about an hour left. Um, what do you guys think about taking the next five minutes to wrap up this conversation and then move to the next? Do I nodding of heads? Okay, cool. And so Evelyn?
Okay, um, and I appreciate um really listening and hearing um all the comments from my fellow colleagues. I would um like to know um, uh, and and the wording of um in long term, twenty twenty-two, twenty-thirty, um, when it says assess changes to the TK and preschool authorings.
That's good.
Um, and I'm I'm hoping that we per um, you know, the California Department of Education, they do not link those to at all. And we keep linking them. And on the website for the California Department of Education, they specifically call out TK as um, they're going to have specifically wording is that um, you know, it's part of the two-year curriculum, or it's part of a two-year kindergarten program with a modified curriculum, and they specifically say that we LEAs must ensure that parents understand the difference between locally implemented preschool versus TK. So when we keep linking them, it's confusing to, I think, staff and to parents. And so I would like to see that just based on what the information from from the California Department of Education talks about in terms of TK is really aligned with Kinder. And preschool is something completely separate, as evidence what Mr. Mayfield said about all the additional requirements that really are required for preschool napping and some of those other credentialing, early childhood things. So um, it it I think it just gives a message that those two are linked versus TK and kindergarten are linked. And then I did have a question for staff about um, this full day standard schedule for kindergarten has been bantered about in the district for I don't know, the last, what, ten years? And do we have um statistics on the state as to what kindergarten, you know, what what full day Kinder, I mean, what percentage of of Kinders in the state are full day?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly look that up. I mean, my my understanding of it is uh from studying in the past is that it's the majority. So I would say like seventy percent, something like that uh of the priest or the kindergarten programs in the state have have a full day program. Um, now, I don't know exactly what the definition of full day would be, you know, for for those districts, like when a district says full day, are they referring to Monday through Friday, you know, eight twenty-five to two fifty? Or, you know, what exactly is the definition? But I think I think more have a full day program than not.
Okay. And 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 I'm assuming that that because TK is aligned with Kinder, then that's the same thing, that the TK and Kinder is it's it's the same kind of that it's more of a uh that because it's considered a two-year program with a modified curriculum, that that's kind of the same thing? Yeah, I'm just trying to look at, you know, when we're looking at goals and where to place these goals. You know, just, you know, you know, our our district, you know, where our district falls versus, you know, are we lagging behind the state? Are we um? You know, I guess I guess that's my question with.
Well, Rick, I'd like to jump in on this. I I agree with Evelyn. I do think TK TK should be partnered up with K and not with preschool. Preschool is a separate initiative that our district has taken on, that I think is unique and entirely focused on bringing in kids into our district who wouldn't otherwise have access to preschool, high-quality preschool. The TK program is a relatively new phenomenon in California, and it's evolving. I happen to love the idea of looking at TK and K as an integrated way of when we when we um onboard students who may not be ready for kindergarten, but um but end up in kindergarten. We have the ability in the um the flexibility in our programs to give them a two-year K experience, calling it TKK. And so uh I do think both of those programs need to be full day. I know, Rick, you've been working on that, and um and the state is clearly in support of that effort. And so for me, I know, Mark, I see your thumbs up. For me, I I happen to think also that a full day uh TKK program allows families to go back to work and saves them the heartache of trying to figure out how to uh how to manage childcare and how to um um, uh, make sure their child has what they need. And so for me, I think it should be a short term goal. Uh, but as I I have to tell you as to the board, um, this is a challenge because it 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 um, we're working closely with our our union and we're working closely with our staff um to try and make this a reality. But it does impact working conditions, so we have to be careful. And so for me, I think it's a short term goal, but it's also, I think I'm struggling with the short term, long term structure. Because I think there, in many ways, they 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 blend into each other. When you think long term, you're thinking, oh, my gosh, we have to wait forever for that to happen. But in reality, it's next, it's it's one school year beyond the next one. So how we can uh maybe if there are intermediate term goals would might be a way to capture that. Um, however, I do think Evelyn's point of TKK being together is a a much more appropriate way to structure this.
Mark.
Yep, sorry, just as quickly as I can. First of all, my concept. Thanks. First of all, my concept on half day, in it would be half day in a structure, in a very structured learning environment, and then a half day on say, the going around through workstations or talking with other people or doing DAPA. So it's just that smaller class size and class, just to define that. The other thing is, I think we need to remember that um since Jerry Brown was governor, almost every year a bill comes forward that says full-time kindergarten. The last one, this last year was uh vetoed only because the governor didn't think there were enough facilities, and he's proposing a large bond measure um and is saying at that point, we probably would be going in a full-day uh kindergarten. Um, yeah, let me just see, real quick points here. Oh, and my understanding it, and I don't know if it's true in California, but what I'm reading is that kindergarten enrollment, I thought was down in California. According, and so, Rick, I don't know if you have any information on that, but I thought statewide kindergarten was down enrollment.
Yeah, I don't have any specific information on what Kinder enrollment uh is looking like. I can certainly look into that, though.
Thanks, everybody.
Um, so Catherine and then Evelyn, and then I I think I'm going to ask us to to move forward on our agenda. And obviously, we'll come back to you with another draft of this later. We'll have opportunity to continue to um finesse this. Catherine.
Yes, I I just um wanted to um double back, if you don't mind, for a moment about the um accelerated learning opportunities. And I just want to do a little go back in the go-back machine and uh and talk about how when ten or fifteen years ago, when um teach school was, we were, it was on the chopping block of let's get away, uh, let's get rid of this because it's too um, it's uh too special. It's too uh, it's uh, it's it's something that we should offer to all students, which was absolutely true. But we were going about it in a way that we have to close teach school, that that will make it equal across the board. Um, thankfully, when we hired Dr. Prater, he realized that the notion is the opposite. It's that we want all students to have the opportunity to have accelerated learning opportunities, and that's why we started the dual immersion programs uh as well, and increased the number of dual immersion programs in language um that we that we now have. So I just want us to to continue to think along that line of accelerated learning opportunities for all students is something that we should be allowing the parent-child um to take, you know, to embrace and to take advantage of. And uh, so I just wanted to remind us of that history lesson and uh and uh just suggest that we continue to look for opportunities to have all students um be able to reach as high as they can reach for in their educational goals. Thanks.
And then Evelyn, did you have one final comment?
Yeah, I did. I wanted to um thank Catherine for reminding reminding of this. And I wanted to just ask um Dr. Prater, he was talking about um, you know, short term, intermediate, long term. And I don't know if part of that, the short term would include um um, something about that, you know, as we're looking to modify or the the TK Kinder, would it include some kind of um ability to in invest more in um uh robust um preps for our um, you know, Kinder TK of that art, music, or and this may be too directive, so I'm just throwing that out and I won't say another word. So, thank you.
Well, Evelyn, I I appreciate I I appreciate your directive approach. Um, but um, yeah, so we uh we have anticipated this and built in extra staffing uh for um, if if we're able to do this next year, we will. If we can't get everybody on board, um, then we have, the board's going to have to make some strategic conversations, and we'll talk about that next Tuesday in closed session. However, um, what I will say is we've anticipated this because if you do go full day in a previously structured model where it's not a full day, the way it works is you have to build in prep time for teachers. And so in order to do that, you have to expand your PE and your um your music. In our case, it would be our music um, library, um, VAPA kind of program model. And so that's what we're we're looking at right now. We're building that actually into the budget as a placeholder in the event the board decides that that's a a direction they want to head in. Um, I just happen to love this conversation. I think it's a long time coming. And um, and I appreciate um the fact that you're willing to have this conversation with us as a board. It says so much about you. And um, and so now it's a matter of um, if we can actually do it, then we will make sure our teachers have the necessary preps. And what that equates to in a student life of a student, which is really what we're about, um, is that that our students would have a full day of learning and they would have PE and perhaps music and maybe art and the things that we know are really important. And um, and so for those things, I think it's just such a great program. Now, I can tell you that um that getting our teachers um to that place has been uh something that Rick Mayfield has been doing. And um, and and I just really appreciate his work on that. And um, we're not there yet, but we're getting closer, is my point. So I will keep you posted.
So Adrian, I think we're ready to, I think we're trying to draw this to a close and pretty ready to move on. Um, what I'd like to do before we start with the next part of this set study session is to take about a five-minute break and uh resume the meeting at uh ten thirty-five. Is everybody good with that? Okay, let's resume at ten thirty-five then. We'll take about a six-minute break, something like that. Okay, let's resume at 10:35 then. We'll take about a six minute break, something like that. Let's see how we doing? We're getting, looks like we're getting people on. Wait for, there's Laura and Evelyn. And there's Adrian. Do we have a quorum back yet? Let's see, there is one, two, three, four, five. Five of us. There are five board members here, six board members here. We're gonna, we're gonna resume the meeting now. So Adrian, do you want to take it away and introduce the next topic?
So the next, next part of our session is going to be an educational session for the board. So we're gonna shift gears from talking about policy and goals and hear from staff about the fourth through sixth grade grade span, understanding kind of where what the district is doing with that grade, those grade levels now and some of their ideas for the future. And I think, Rick, you're kind of in charge of that presentation, right?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Do you have the slides too? I guess I apologize, I didn't check. Okay, great.
Do, yeah, I mean, if I can, if I could share my screen, Mandy. Thank you. So if you ask any teacher from any grade level span, they'll tell you that that grade level span is the most important for child development. Talk to middle school people, it's middle school. You talk to early learning, it's early learning. I've broken up many a battle between a kindergarten teacher and a sixth grade teacher on which is more difficult, but undoubtedly fourth through sixth grade is a critical part for students learning. And so we're gonna go over kind of some of the things that we're currently doing and what we're thinking for the future for fourth to sixth grade learning. So again, you know, key developmental time where students decide, I really like this, about how they feel about themselves and about school. You know, the early learning that happens K through, you know, four, five, six, that cements how kids view themselves as learners and it has a great impact on what they do moving forward. Reading levels, of course, there we go through a lot of reading levels early on, but they really get more complex and in depth and more difficult critical thinking skills that kids need and comprehension skills that kids need. They have to look at very different perspectives and they have to be able to read texts and interpret what those perspectives are that characters in a book particularly have. And that is a high level skill and it gets more and more complex as it goes up through the grade levels. You know, looking at words vocabulary expands greatly. This is a big jump from, you know, K three and four, six in terms of student vocabulary levels that that are needed. And how do they decode those words, figure out what those words mean in context is a skill that students are taught. There's more demand for content knowledge, you know. Of course, we assess for science in fifth grade, but that's an accumulation of the learning in science from kindergarten through fifth grade, and it gets more and more difficult, both in history and science as students move up through the grade levels. We used to say that K three, you learn to read and then four and above, you read to learn. But I think, you know, that that's an outdated, you know, phrase, an outdated concept. I think kids continue to learn how to read all through elementary grade levels. And then, of course, in math, you know, the foundation multiplication and division is is being cemented and developed, you know, more in these grade levels than it is at the early learning grade levels. That was an interesting conversation earlier about acceleration. One of the beautiful things about the state standards is it does, they spiral up through the grade levels. So students are able to extend and expand their learning, even though it wouldn't technically be considered above their grade level. They can extend and expand their learning through the state standard. So it accommodates students at a wide range of ability levels. And then sixth grade, you know, lays the foundation for ratios, proportional relationships. It gets really complicated. And it's, you know, fun to walk into a sixth grade classroom in the in the morning on a Friday when they're learning how to multiply and divide like and unlike denominator fractions. And, you know, these are complicated concepts. You all know the show You Are Smart as a Fifth Grader. If you look at fifth and sixth grade math and you look at the assessments that those students are being asked to do, they're very high level, very high skill level for students at this grade level. Looking at reading on the left hand side of your screen is a sample of a third grade narrative piece. And on the right hand side, a sixth grade narrative piece. And you can see as you look through these reading samples, writing samples rather, just the level of thought. And, you know, not even talking about grammar and punctuation and all that kind of thing, but just the level of thought that students need to have to express themselves at a high level at a particular grade level. I know that in doing parent conferences, it's a lot of fun to show parents the growth of writing over the course of the year. And it's really noticeable in early grades, what a student can do from the beginning to the end of the year. But the level of thought that students have in fourth, fifth and sixth grade writing is pretty impressive. What we're currently doing, you know, in fourth, fifth and sixth grade, these are somewhat similar to the lower grades in terms of structure with a few differences. You know, obviously, it's a full day program. We have the unified curriculum that we use Lucy Calkins and in reading and writing and bridges in math up until sixth grade, in which case we use CPM for math. Standards based report card is still in place, K six. We have our common assessments, which we analyze regularly every trimester. Teachers have time, planning time where they're released from school to review the assessments, adjust the interventions, that type of thing. We have interventions for identified students, but I would say that fourth through sixth grade, there are less interventions than there are pre K through three. And, you know, part of that is just a function of resources. And part of that is a function of, you know, getting those kids up to speed and up to grade level in their early grades means that we don't have to offer as many in the upper grades. We have our new iInnovate Labs, which, you know, I just the excitement of what we're gonna be able to do with those labs and how we're gonna expand our science learning. We had a great conversation here in Isla yesterday about that. And there's just so much potential for how we can connect science learning in our iInnovate Labs. And it's just awesome to see those facilities ready to go in our in our schools. And then music instruction begins. I mean, of course, music instruction happens early in the grades, but formal with a music teacher begins in fourth grade and goes up from there. Similar things in fifth grade, you can see. And then sixth grade, we add band on. We used to do band at more grade levels, but the band and music teacher said that if they could focus on a particular grade level, they could, you know, double up on some of the band experiences. And so students get a more intense band experience, I would say, at sixth grade. And then I would say also that most of our schools departmentalized by subject when we get up into the upper grades, whether it be fifth grade on the coast or sixth grade in town. And by that, I mean, one teacher specializes in English Language Arts. Another teacher specializes in math, science, and then the students rotate around to those subjects. And and that's beneficial for a couple of reasons, you know, number one, it allows teachers to to specialize on a topic. They teach the same lesson multiple times. And so it cuts down on preps for them as well. And then also it gets students used to kind of that rotational going to middle school experience of, you know, going to different teachers for the particular subjects that they have. We have Teach Elementary School and of course, our dual language immersion programs. But in Teach, there is some accelerated pacing in mathematics, but it's not about skipping grade levels or progressing through the grade levels. It's more about taking the standards at a particular grade level and spiraling them up as far as kids can take them. So that when they finish sixth grade, they are ready to go on to an accelerated math program, which would be at the secondary level, more about getting ready for, you know, geometry by the freshman year or even algebra two. If a student were to additionally take accelerated math and or a summer opportunity for math acceleration. They teach as integrated units in English Language Arts and Social Studies. There's not enough hours in the day to teach all the content that we have. And so integration is a key concept where we do some social studies learning during the Language Arts period of the day. And then they have deeper learning strands at each grade level. They focus on coding and robotics in fourth grade. Fifth grade is design engineering and then sixth grade multimedia production. So that students are getting kind of a well rounded experience of those topics through those grade levels. They do focus on project based learning, I would say, more so than other schools and have some great outdoor education initiatives while at Teach, as as do other schools. Special education, Dan will cover that for us.
Thanks, Rick. This is similar to what you saw when we discussed our progression when we were talking pre K through three. We're really proud of the variety of opportunities we have for our special education students, starting with full inclusion and then every step getting a little bit more restrictive. So K through six, full inclusion. Then we have a resource program at all of our schools. We move on to less intensive SDC. And you'll see that those programs are offered at Los Rancho's, Del Mar, Bishop's Peak and Baywood. And then you move on to our more intensive SDC and they are located at CL Smith and Monarch Grove. So we have, yes.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Just for others that are attending, is it possible when you come to an acronym, if you'll just say the whole, what it means?
You got it. Thanks, Mark. I appreciate that reminder. So LI is less intensive and SDC is a special day class. So you've got your less intensive special day classes and those children go out and do quite a bit of inclusion and mainstreaming. And then you have your more intensive SDC classes next. These children have more needs and you might find them with less inclusion and mainstreaming. And then on the far right, you'll see that we've listed our K six CEP. This is our counseling enriched program. We used to call it a TLC, but now they are CEPs and a counseling enriched program. Small classes, also special day classes, they absolutely do mainstream. But we have a half time school psychologist assigned to each program. So they really work on the mental health needs for the students. And then finally, our medically fragile class at San Luis Obispo High School does span kindergarten through our adults with disabilities. I think most people are familiar with William Walters, our teacher in the program, who is so committed to our students and really outstanding in the way that he provides for their really specific needs. Thanks, Rick.
Diana, on the on the coast, when a student gets to sixth grade, I'm assuming they, if they need a special day class, they go to the special day class at the middle school.
That's exactly right. Yes. So that would be at Los Osos Middle School. Very, very good point.
Okay, and we'll cover some of the data now. Laura will cover some of the data now, what it looks like at fourth to sixth grade level.
So, good morning. I started by pulling our California Assessment for Student Progress and Performance or Performance and Progress, our state testing results from 2019, so pre pandemic for our fourth through sixth graders. And you can see blue is English Language Arts, red is math. And what just really stands out here is the gap between our students that are not economically disadvantaged or SED and those that are economically disadvantaged SED. And then EL, our English learners there versus our all. So it just speaks to the achievement gap that we were talking about earlier. It was in place before COVID. And then Mr. Mayfield, if you want to hit next for me. And you're going to see it again here after COVID or during COVID. So we just took a a quick dipstick into reading for fourth through sixth graders. Blue is very beginning of the school year, red was end of trimester one, yellow was end of trimester two. And Fastbridge uses a a four tier system. They use advanced and low risk, which is like proficient, our old proficient. And then there's some risk and high risk. So these are students that are low risk and advanced so that you would consider to be on grade level. And what just stands out again, of course, is that gap. It it just persists. Yes, Mrs. Frame. You're muted. Sorry.
Thank you. Quick question. When I was looking at the data and I was looking at the Sback versus this four, six grade A reading, how closely aligned are those tests? Because what I, when I was looking, I was noticing that typically across the board, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the fourth through sixth grade, they're scoring higher across the board. But when I look at like, I'm just looking at SED for Sback and those scores are really low. But for SED, even though there's the gap, they're scoring higher. So I guess is the assessment aligned closely enough to the Sback? You know, which they're gonna have to be taking, so.
Yes. So there's some pieces in here to consider. So this is only reading. And the Sback assesses reading, writing, listening and speaking, right? So we don't have that full picture. I would also say this is when they were assessing in distance learning. And we know that we maybe had some students getting some some assistance from adults in their house on their assessments. So we're not 100% sure that this is actually quite accurate. So I think, you know, as now that students are back and more of them are going to be assessing in person, will have a better feel for the alignment. But I do think one of the things that plays into that is this doesn't include writing. And our Sback does. And I think sometimes that brings, I know. I know at least as a principal, I would see that writing would often be like our lowest area. So it's just, you know. It's interesting, it's definitely something we're going to have our eyes on, Mrs. Frame is how these align.
That was one of the considerations for us doing the S back this year. Was that we, you know, with with Fastbridge being a new assessment, relatively new assessment to our district. We really want to look at what are the correlations between it and S back. And so that's one of the considerations for giving us back this year.
Can I, Laura, can I ask a quick one? So in both of these, we show basically what's proficient, the new word, do I have that right? Okay, but and we often talk about the gap between non SED and SED. But as I look at this, if I reverse it in my mind, like the across the board on all. It looks like about thirty percent of the kids are not proficient. That's a ton, ton, that's a big percent. So and and worse in in the other groups, but not not that much. So but when we talk about. At risk and closing the achievement gap, are we also talking about closing the achievement gap for say the non SED seventy versus? And I've been very focused on non SED versus SED. And I know we we knew as staff talk about that, but this scared me.
And I and I think some of this is some. You know, pandemic fallout too, we will see how that kind of rolls in T three. I really am anxious to see the T, the trimester three data.
But if you go back to the S back slide, it's similar, it's, this is from nineteen. There's still that thirty percent not making it.
It persists, yes, and part of multi tiered systems of support is to really drill down to the individual student. And figure out what they need. And so as we expand that next year, we're going to be doing that that work even more. And we're not going to say, well, we're not going to put a kid in intervention because they're not SED. You know, we're going to give kids what they need. Based on the, you know, resources and the things that we have, which is a lot, so. Kind of looking at what the data shows. You know, here, we're kind of back to. Prior to COVID, it was our fourth through sixth grade students were achieving kind of in line with everybody else. We have the achievement gap. And then we're back to that acceleration piece. And then in person learning and assessment will help us better identify. So like I just said, I'm really excited to see trimester three data. Now that we have a lot of students assessing in person, I think we'll have a better feel, so. Yes, the gap persists, but I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Mayfield to talk about upper elementary vision.
Yeah, and so, you know, moving forward, just looking at that first best instruction and making sure our teachers. The instructional strategies that they need to help students to learn this. You know, deep thinking, standards based integrated material. You know, one of the things that I've been really heartened by is the in in this COVID distance learning era is the small group instruction. Especially at secondary, where I think traditionally that's not a model that's employed at secondary. And there's been kind of an embracing of the power of working with students in small groups. And so figuring out a way to help teachers to to be able to do those smaller groups within a regular class setting. As one of our challenges moving forward. And then, you know, we're making connections to life, business, CTE, Liz Moore has done some work on. Promoting CTE at this level so that kids in fourth through sixth grade are beginning to think about this more in depth. And the opportunities that await them in middle school and and high school. And, you know, just pulling in more outside resources into our schools, whether it be I innovate or other engaging strategies. Assessment, you know, critical part of the whole cycle, you know, we got to know where kids are at. We have to have an accurate picture in order to meet their particular needs. And then beefing up our targeted intervention, as Laura said. We've got to drill down to the student level and figure out at sites who exactly are the kids that need the support. And get them that support. And then, of course, common schedules, you know, full day opportunities will remain part of the picture for our upper grades. Social emotional learning for fourth through sixth grades. We know coming back from COVID that social emotional learning or SEL is going to be more important than ever. It was before, it was an important factor before. We see increased anxiety in our students at school. You know, we see all sorts of issues and COVID has only exacerbated those problems. So we use a program called Second Step. It used to be steps to respect and they they did an updated version, which is now called Second Step. There are four different units and you can see growth mindset. Emotion management, empathy and kindness, and then problem solving, important skills for kids to have. The classroom teacher does these lessons, but that's in conjunction with the school counselor who usually. Does some of the training on how the programs work or will even go into classrooms and give the lessons as well. We purchased the digital curriculum, you'll see that in the LCAP that is back in front of you again on Tuesday night. But the digital curriculum for step second step is is in there. At purchase so that everybody will have access to all those lessons. And then Sabers is which is the student self rating and teacher self rating. SEL kind of assessment will be given to students at this grade level span. And then site care teams will review those results, so universal screeners are given to everyone. And then those students who are were concerned about based on these results and other factors as well, of course. You know, will be given, you know, special assistance. And then in tier two, you know, just continuing to work with therapeutic interventions. Family therapists and counselors at our school sites. And you'll also see in the LCAP on Tuesday night, which you've already seen in the initial blush is that there's increased. Therapist time in our schools to, you know, accommodate this this greater need, so. Already in the return to school, we've seen a benefit in social emotional learning, just having kids back together. And that should only increase when we all come back together in the fall, but it's something that we'll be monitoring. Very closely in our students and helping to address their needs. And then, you know, the foundation, as we've talked about this morning, has done so many things in such a short period of time. I remember first hearing about this idea and concept, Dr. Prater talked about it and thinking, wow, that's amazing. But I could never have imagined what it has done in such a short period of time. It's really impressive. And so, you know, the the idea is just engaging equitably all students in hands on project based learning. That, you know, really pull these kids in. The Opportunity Task Force is like a subcommittee of the foundation and that's to look at. Removing barriers to college and career for disadvantaged students, like what are the issues, what are the problems? That group has interviewed counselors, interviewed teachers, a panel of folks to say what what are the things that are holding kids back? And how can we help to meet their needs, including paying for SAT tests, paying for college admissions. For Avid, things like that. And then the teacher grants program, we did a round of that and there's another round, I believe, coming up. So to get teachers to think outside the box and apply for grants to, you know, give them money. And then one term that Christine especially with the foundation loves to. Share, which I think is an awesome term is a moonshot goal. It's all like with with everything we do, let's always have a moonshot goal, meaning. If if this really were successful, what could we accomplish? And, you know, just to expand and equitable access to place based learning experiences like camps and field trips. And Dr. Prater is working on a proposal to do just that for this next year. Because we know there's quite a bit of inequity in, you know, within our schools in terms of fundraising and the ability to go to camp. And so that effort to to more equalize those things and give equitable access to all students, I think is a. Great idea and a great effort. Okay, so. You know, academic success for all, like this, this is the ultimate equity objective. You know, the only reason we we undertake equity initiatives and educate staff is that we're after. High academic success for all students. We'll know we've got there when we have high academic success. For all of our students, that's what it's about. And and as we've mentioned many times, curriculum, instruction, assessments and supports. We've got to close the achievement gap. I also remember when COVID first hit, thinking, wow, we're going to be really challenged budgetarily. In the future and really the opposite has happened and it's a tremendous opportunity, I think. For us to really make a difference, to really chip away at this achievement gap finally. We have some resources and some great ideas and great people on board to do this work in the coming years. And I'm excited, I'm actively writing the LCAP. Whenever I go off camera, it's because I'm working on the LCAP right now and it's really exciting to see. All the things that we're getting ready to do in the future and. Who would, who would have thought a year ago when this first hit us that that was going to be possible? So it's it's really exciting. SEL, a social emotional learning, as I mentioned, we know is going to be critically important, it will be a focus. For us moving forward, we need to pay attention to all of our students' emotional and social well being. From the earliest learners in preschool all the way up through our adults in the adult school program. And then continuing to foment curiosity and exploration with our innovation opportunities. We have Principal Jeff Martin coming up here next year to help us with that. And the opportunities are, you know, they're there and it's exciting. And then just, you know, consistent supportive structures with intentional thought on how we're going to move students forward. Okay.
Thanks, Rick. Does anyone have any questions for Rick about this presentation? Mark.
Okay, first of all, I want to talk about proportional relationships. I thought that was something you learned in the schoolyard with your friends in middle school. But new definition for me. We talked about the, you showed that the music programs were now were now concentrated in sixth grade. Are teachers doing in class Vapa or do we have rovers that come in and that's that frees up teachers to do? Their lesson plans?
Yeah, so early, early teachers pre K three do not go to formal music instruction. There are different music activities that occur and then teachers do the music instruction through their teaching. Formal music instruction is fourth grade and above and then band is concentrated at sixth grade. To get a more intense experience for those students and prepare them for middle school band opportunities.
I have other questions, but I'll defer to my co co board members.
Does does anyone else have any question? Eve has a question.
I love the presentation, Mr. Mayfield, I just had a question about. I wonder if the principals and they may already be doing this, but you know, with such a focus on. The wonderful students that are right before us, sometimes it's hard to find that. Time to apply for the teacher grants and all those other resources that you touched upon that are necessary. And so I was just wondering if we couldn't have some sort of reminder and maybe bulletin board where those things could be posted. And then encourage applying for them as a team, as a grade level, which has been done before. As well as the individual ones such as I I came across the SESLOC teacher's grant and I inquired about it. And I understand it's already been offered to the teachers, but I don't know whether it just flew by in their email box, you know, their inbox. Or if it's actually on the bulletin board as something they can participate in.
Yeah, great points. As a site administrator, whenever I saw those things, I always made a point of discussing it at staff meetings. Putting it out in our own newsletter so the teachers were aware that that those opportunities were out there. Your point about time is very well taken, it's it's hard to find the time. So I know that the foundation in the past has done workshops to assist teachers to write up the grants and to submit them. They can come up here, I think B three, we opened up previously and had them participate in like how to write a winning grant. And they were given assistance if it were needed, so yeah, great points.
Thank you.
Mark.
Okay. Thanks. I I have to echo you, this. One of the things that I'm finding about the presentation is how thought provoking they are, and I think that that's exactly what I need. As I look to set district wide goals, so I really appreciate that. At some point, if my fellow board members agree, I'd love to see teach attendance broken down by feeder school. I just, I'm interested in that. And then teach has so much out of the classroom time, it sort of reminds me of an earlier concept that I mentioned, but. That. Is there, is there any problem justifying minutes to the state? Or do we even do that in this district? Are we required to because we have our own funding?
Yeah, that the data for teach attendance would be no problem, we can pull that up quite easily and share with all of the board, which we will do. And then we absolutely follow state instructional minutes. I would say in general, all of our minutes are quite a bit above the state minimum averages. There there are some grade levels that are, you know, just just above, but others are are quite a bit above. And then.
Ray, Rick, before before we go on, Mark, you made a request for for information for on behalf of the board. So I need to make sure that the rest, but Mark, I need to make sure.
I'm just saying, I was clear, I was clear about saying that if the rest of the board wants it.
Right, and and that's exactly what I'm getting to, so I appreciate your your offer, Mr. Mayfield, but I want to make sure. That this is something that the rest of the board has an interest in. And that's something I've been trying to do is is really, if people, if all any of us board members have. Want more information from the administration to try to make sure that this is in interest of all of the board members. So I just want to make sure we don't forget that. Thanks, Rick, go ahead.
I think I answered the questions there, so we definitely follow the minutes. And then those outdoor activities would be included in their instructional minutes. Because they are standards based activities and, you know, the gardens, the gardens are kind of. Sprouting up all over the place in the district and. The One Cool Earth has done some really amazing gardens. In fact, if you're in need of some fresh produce, you can swing by, I know Pacheco has some great things in the garden. And classes use it and it's standards based instruction. And we're also looking to work with the botanical garden as well, especially now that we reopen and can get back out with field trips. To work with them to get kids out in the garden, those are standards based grade level activities that are great for kids.
So. So part of the day in the class, part of the day outside, I love it, thank you. So so let's, let's, let me query the board and see if the board has an interest in finding out. Where the teach feeder schools primarily are, is that something board members have an interest in? If there's a, if there's a majority of that, then we'll do that. So I I'd be interested in that too. So I guess we have a majority of the board that's interested in that, Mr. Mayfield, maybe you could get that to us in Friday notes?
We'll do it.
Okay, thank you, and not tomorrow necessarily. I know you're pretty busy right now.
Other questions for staff? Evelyn.
Yeah, I had a quick, and that was a great presentation, Rick, and it goes along with. One of the things that we've heard a lot from, you know, parents. And I think was, I don't, I can't remember, you'll have to correct me on the LCAP, was that opportunity for. Outdoor kind of learning and I don't, and and some parents, I think, were referring to camps, but you know, when I looked at. You know, teach has a a unique opportunities and it's got an acceleration component. But one thing that is really that's. Part of teach that seems to be that could be make sure that we really do a robust job at the other sites as well. Is that outdoor learning component piece and I, you know, it was listed, I I couldn't see those slides. But it was listed kind of in a real separate and it's something that I know, and maybe it's related to some of the pandemic. But it's, you know, that that's what parents are, I I keep hearing out in the community, you know, please make sure, you know, when we return. We have all those opportunities and we have gardens at most sites, but some are in better shape than others. And so if we, I don't know if you can pull that up, but I I hadn't really considered that you unique kind of structure. unique kind of structure that has been implemented at teaching. And I'm wondering if we can also make sure that that's, you know, part of the opportunities for, for all our students, whether they're, you know, have the accelerated opportunities that teach, but also I guess, I don't know where that would fit in, but I hadn't, I hadn't, I guess, really looked at that in terms of how that could benefit all our students.
Well, you know, I would like to weigh in on that. That's exactly why we're investing in Mr. Martin in this, this I innovate space. And it's not just the labs. And what it is, is we're, we are, in a sense, replicating what teach has refined, teach school has done very well. They've really found a way to create highly engaging, interactive, hands-on learning. And it's really, if you, if, and I know Mrs. Fram, you've been there, but they, they do a phenomenal job of doing that work to keep kids at a highly engaged level. And, and so part of Mr. Martin's work will be to develop activities and with his, with his TOSA, I, I innovate TOSA team over the summer and into next year and develop those and share them. So it's not one more thing teachers have to plan.
Yeah, no, no, no.
But rather, a way to provide teachers really well thought out structured activities that they can integrate into their normal everyday lessons. So that is what Mr. Martin's trying to do. That is what we're attempting to do. That will, because we're hearing it from the students, as you know, from the student senate and from the youth truth data. Our students are clamoring, they're, they're screaming out for more engaging, relevant activities. And we believe this is what we're doing. We believe our response to that, to that is to not overwhelm our teachers and say, here's one more thing you have to do, but rather, here is a really fun way to engage kids with relevant engaging activities that align to standards, that enrich the lessons, and that could include our gardening, our gardens at all of our schools, that could include our I innovate labs. And more importantly, this could be part of what goes on in every classroom in our district. So we're, we have a multi-year plan that we're laying out to achieve this and to provide that professional development to staff. So they feel that it's a gift. It's a, it's a opportunity for them as opposed to something they have to plan for and do from the beginning up. And so that's, that's our objective here.
So Dr. Prater, it's like, Ken, when we talk, when the Senate and the students and the surveys are saying more relevancy, are they, are they only talking about hands-on and CTE? Or are they talking about, you know, things like what happened in our, in our community just the other day? And I couldn't want to talk about it, but an officer being shot or George Floyd, or are they also talking about bringing that into the classroom?
Well, for, for our conversation today, I think it's such an important question you just asked, like, how do we bring in the social relevancy to kids in the classroom that kids are experiencing out in, in, in society? And that is absolutely a component of this. You can't separate it out. In fact, yesterday, I was talking to Mr. Martin as we were talking about backward mapping this into our classrooms. We started talking about the impact of, of global warming and climate. We started discussing, what are the things that, you know, the water crisis, what are we really doing to bring that conversation to the classroom in practical, hands-on ways? Now, it isn't just hands-on, but, but the activities that kids are, are really going to, to respond well to are the ones that are already occurring as conversations in their, in their lives and in their homes and in their communities. So I imagine to answer your question, it's a little bit of both. It's a little bit of all of those things. But the team that Jeff has, it's going to take us some time to develop those activities. But I can, I can promise you, it will include things like the social, the social issues that are, are impacting all of us will be part of those, those activities at some point.
I think, I think Ellen had her hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, you know, when we were talking about relevancy, it, it took me back a little bit to our earlier conversation about acceleration. And something I'd be interested in is it's another word, relevancy, and to drill down to what does that mean for students? We're saying what we think it means for students as the adults. And I'm curious about what the student, if we asked a student, you're saying you would like to learn things that are relevant to you, tell me what that means, because we're telling them what it means instead of them telling us what it means. And, you know, so I, I really like to have both sides of that conversation because they may not match up. And we're asking them for their input. And then if we decide what that input means, and they're like, well, that doesn't match up to what I said. So I'm curious about whether we have opportunities to, to examine that more closely and question the students more closely in terms of, explain that to me. What would you, what would you feel is relevant to your learning?
Chris and then Eve.
Yeah, I, that's, that's, I was going to talk about something else, but that, that's an interesting point, Ellen. And it sort of almost dovetails into what I was, was going to talk about. At some point, I think we have, we have an obligation to determine what relevancy is. You know, I want to hear from what the, I want to hear what the students consider relevant. And that's an important conversation. But there are things that students may not feel irrelevant that are absolutely relevant, like civics instruction, right? And, and, and the, the social, the societal issues that we need to be talking about. So I think that's important. One thing that, that I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of though, too, is the arts and the humanities as we're talking about, as we're talking about hands-on instruction. Right? And, and interestingly enough, Ellen, I was thinking about relevancy. So I was at an art exhibit on Tuesday. And one of the issues they talked about was, I believe it was 1937, 1938, the intersection between Alexander Calder, who was, who was most famous for his mobiles and Pablo Picasso. And the reason I'm mentioning this is because they at one art exhibit where Picasso presented the Guernica panel, there was also, there was also an art installation done by Calder to talk about the rise of fascism in Europe in the 1930s.
Chris, if I could respond briefly.
There is a place for all of that stuff, and we need to, and I don't want to lose that.
Yeah. And I think if we listen to how, what the students feel is relevant, the educators get to determine then how to present that. So that can be wrapped up in arts and humanities and writings and hands-on activities. But so I think that's, that's sort of how we align the two, with the students, how they determine what they believe is relevant to them. And then how as educators, our educators, who is, you know, we're not, we don't do the curriculum, but how they determine how best to present that material in a way that is responsive and respectful of the students' definition, what they believe is relevant, and yet addresses the standards and, and in ways that the students may not otherwise of course have, have considered before.
I think, I know Eve has had her hand up.
Yes, I wanted to appreciate you bringing that up, Ellen, originally. Now, if we tell them what is relevant, that's called indoctrination. If they tell us what is relevant, that is education. It comes from the Latin to bring out. So we want to bring it out of them rather than put some sort of doctrine that is in the teacher's mind or bias on top of, of them. Let them be open to many different thought processes. And I like where that conversation is going. Good, good, good points.
But, but again, I just remind that we have, we have state standards and state responsibilities when we're teaching. And, and we just need to keep that in mind when we think about relevance. And so there are things we have to do. And maybe part of the relevance conversation is, how are we actually, how are we actually teaching what we're required to teach? Are we teaching it in a way that makes sense to students? That still gets to what we have to do and our obligations as educators through the state, right?
Yeah. And, and you know, I, I just want to weigh in finally on this because your points are well taken, Ms. Sheffer. You know, you're asking kids, what is relevant to you is essential. And the great part is, is we have a structure for that. An ongoing structure in the student senate. And they mix no words as to what they think is important. In fact, I, I think that's a hugely valuable piece. Now, that's something I will frame out in the next year. Now, to, in a real brass tacks way, Mr. Unger, to your point, and Ms. Dobler Drew, to yours, what we're really talking about for next year at the elementary level at least, is things like, when I say relevancy, what I'm really talking about is in fifth grade, you start looking at area and volume. Okay, area perimeter volume. When I say relevant, what I'm really, what Jeff Martin and I were talking about yesterday was, how can we reimagine the lesson of area, volume and perimeter in real life terms? Like, I think the example we used was a oh, it was the sliding drawer, like a file cabinet that was in the back of his Zoom camera yesterday. And I said, well, that's a great example. You create an activity where you have all these, all these things that you need to put into a drawer or into a series of drawers. And you want to express to kids a different way of understanding area, volume and perimeter. And now you're going to create a file system that has these materials, these constraints. But now you're going to learn about area, volume and perimeter in a very different way. And so kids that learn in a tactile way or in a holistic way might really capture that understanding through that activity. That's what I was referring to as relevant. So that's a relevant example of how area, volume and perimeter might be expressed. And so that's really from a brass tacks place. When I talk about elementary school, fourth through sixth grade activities using hands-on learning, that would be one way to do that. A challenge with that same activity for those kids that already understand it on pen and pencil, pen and paper, area, volume and perimeter. They might take on a different layer, a different dimension of that. Whereas a child who's struggling with the pen and paper might use that activity to really understand it in a different way, in a deeper way. That's really what I was saying at this point. In the years to come, we're going to drive down, drill down deeper and, and create much more rich expressions of that. That's all I wanted to say.
I think Eve has her hand up.
Actually, but before Eve, I just wanted to do a quick time check with Chris and staff. I know it's 11:27. So we're kind of at time for this agenda item. Just take a couple more questions and then wrap things up. Is that?
Before, before, before you go on, is everybody good? Is everybody good with what Adrian is proposing? Does everybody feel like we can sort of wrap things up with a few more comments and questions? Okay, good. I'm sorry, Eve, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. What, Adrian?
Oh, I was just going to say, and of course, we'll be asking you to provide your feedback between this session and next session on this. So if you don't have an opportunity to share all your thoughts right now, you absolutely will be able to do that on paper after.
So Eve, sorry. Yeah. So I would love to take the, like, this discussion that we'd had about relevance that was not what Eric had in mind and continue it when we get like to the high school level or even the middle school level. Because I don't want it to be just put on a shelf and forgotten. I'd like to come back to it. But at any rate, I think another maybe synonym, not to parse words or anything, but synonym for relevant would be concrete. I think you're talking about concrete examples because, rather than, you know, but that's just, I'm just offering that as another adjective.
Thank you. Does anybody have any final questions before I talk about next steps? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. I don't know if you heard my keyboard, but I've been taking notes of what we have been discussing here. So we have it for later. So our next session is going to be June 7th. It sounds like Dr. Prater and I should talk about what's feasible for that date. But ideally, we want to engage in conversation about what you'd like to see as goals for this grade span. So we'll be hearing from us between sessions to get your thoughts on priority, like initial thoughts on priority goals for this grade span. You also already received this week from me that staff draft of the vision, mission and core principles for consideration. And I'm asking for comments, thoughts on that by the end of the month, the end of May, so that we can then present that in June, both the draft and feedback from the board. And hopefully we'll be talking about high school and middle school at our next session. So you'll be getting an information packet from district staff next week with information in preparation for those conversations as well. Does anybody have questions about next steps? I know Chris has his hand up.
I did want to add that we will be discussing the content of the retreat with Eric on the seventh, and we will be reaching out to everybody, all the board members to, to talk about that as well. So please know that that's coming, that's coming as well. Okay?
Eric, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, I just really just wanted to say how much I appreciate this conversation today. I really feel that this is the type of discussion and, and detailed kind of feedback that I've been looking for, for the last decade. I think it's just so important. And I, I just appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
All right. Well, um, if no one has any final thoughts, I'll pass it over to Chris to move you onto your next agenda item.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Adrian. And thanks, you know, again, thanks to everybody. What a, we've had some really great discussions today, you guys. I just think I'm, I'm really pleased with it. What, and Eric, I guess you probably are, you're shaking your head too. I'm hoping that this is the kind of thing that is going to be helpful to you as we look at our long-term goals. And as we look at our, you know, proposed mission and vision statements, I, I think we've got a lot of things that we have thought about, a lot of, a lot of good comments and good thinking on that. So I guess we're going to move now into our measure D conversation. Ryan, what do you have to add for us about that?
Oh, Chris, Ellen has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, I'm going to check up, check out now. And Ryan, I'll get back with you soon. But, you know, I have a little girl.
Enjoy being a grandma.
Bye-bye, Lala.
So yeah, just really quickly for the board, kind of a quick update. I have some photos for Slow High I could share. But we're, we're finishing the south side of the 100 building. So Chris Bonin and myself will be basically walking with all the new science teachers, or not new science teacher, but the science teachers into the new spaces, kind of show them the area, talk about kind of new class layouts, you know, what really trying to get them to leave anything that they've kind of collected over the past 30 years that they don't need in the old spaces, right? To keep this new area as clean and as nice as possible. And also talk, you know, what can we purchase? What, what are the things that they need to, to keep it looking good? So whether it's new beakers and supplies or things like that, that, that will assist them, you know, as they move into the new spot. So Dr. Prater, myself, Mr. Bonin walked it yesterday, walked the new, and it looks beautiful. So just really nice to, to have those, you know, in windows that open all the outside classrooms, right? The new hallways, the new lighting, just, you know, everything about it. And, and in particular, it's kind of like a timeless design. So it really fits the whole old gym. You know, the annex math building, right? The new student services building, they all tie in together, which The new student services building, they all tie in together, which is, which is a really nice thing. I also talked, took Dr. Prater over to the Performing Arts Center, right? Walked through it, looked at it. And again, I I look forward to, you know, if you haven't seen it recently, but it's pretty much done now. They have all of the the green room done, the new lighting, the new, you know, mirrors for the, for the actors and actresses, right? All the new stage setup, sound system, and it's beautiful. It really looks nice. We're going to use the same color scheme at Morro Bay High, and and that project is currently under under construction now. The track, Mano Construction, Mano, I think Tom is is trying to prove a point that he's the best contractor in town. And so if you, if you go by the the track at Slow High, you'll see that he is knocking it out of the park. You know, they are rolling, getting stuff done. And I think for him, you know, he really underbid that project, honestly. You know, his bid was six hundred thousand dollars less than the other, than the next bidder, because he really wanted it. And so, you know, I think for him, if he can get that project done quickly, he'll save on general conditions and make up, you know, any potential losses that he might have faced, right? So and and that's just a win for us if he gets the track and field done and and kids are able to use it right prior to what the expectation was. So those are all really positive things. Eve?
Um, Eve, you're muted. There you go.
Give me a moment here. That was a little quick there, Chris. No, just kidding. Anyway, I just want to say I was floored as I drove by to see the tree, the tree removal is is like drawing back curtain and showing the gorgeous campus of San Luis Obispo High School that we never could see before because of all the trees and everything. So that was really good choice of tree removal. It's a display of a beautiful architectural piece. And I'm just, I'm just amazed. So it looks really good.
Yeah, I know, it's it's nice. And just so you know, we we replace every tree with another tree, but maybe just not a hundred and fifty foot pine tree, right? That leaves pine needles everywhere. So and yes, placement is critical, right? In terms of where those trees should go and and where they should be. So so, yeah, those are, but definitely a huge difference, just opening that whole area up. Again, they're moving the entire field over to fit the nine lane track, right? So that's, that's why they did that, new fencing. It it'll, it really is gonna, you know, kind of like at Morro Bay High, when you drive up and you see the new fencing along there. They're actually putting the new grass in at Morro Bay in the front. It just really pops, right? It, you know, when you look at the campus. So I think from a public standpoint, when they see the campus, when they look at everything, it just really, you know, it makes a dramatic, you know, impact just on their view, I think, of the campus.
Right, and I want to add that same for Morro Bay High School. I took my son there. He went there for a while and he said, he couldn't recognize anything from way back when he was there. And it all looked really good and looked like really upscale presentation. Just going back to the tree removal and replanting. So the trees aren't going to be replanted in a way to screen the view of the high school. Will it still remain open?
Yes, it remains open. And the trees that we use too are much like if you go by like the the tennis courts at Slow High, there's, they're, they're smaller trees, right? They're more appropriate so that, you know, the root system isn't going to ruin the sewer, the water, those types of things. So, you know, we've, we've been much, you know, much more careful. Now, Morro Bay High, we are working on the city. We'll say that the whole entrance to Morro Bay High School and those willows, right, that are falling. And I mean, it's, we would love to, honestly, we would love to knock all those down and plant new willows, right, along that. But there, the city is not, we have to work with them on it. So we're going to work with them on a plan to hopefully maybe every other, right? Do something like that, but clean up those areas. And in particular, we really need to clean up as you drive in that whole, the city. You know, miniature golf place there, it's just, you know, the weeds are grown. It looks horrible. So, you know, whether, whether we put slats in that fence to kind of disguise it from everyone else or we build our own chain link fence in front of it and with slats, those are just, just so the board knows, those are things that we we know. And, you know, we'll make sure that we, it looks good. I will say, I I am, you know, I'm working with Scott Skaldi, he was coming on to the campus, right? And, you know, I I have to help him and and basically walk him through, you know, Measure D. All the things that we did, right? All the things that are happening there, all the things that we've done at the school site so that he has a good grasp when, when staff bring up questions or ask him things that he's able to to respond in a positive district-centered way, right? And why we did things, you know? And just so the board knows, we, we built the pool at Morro Bay first. We did the J Wing at Morro Bay first. We did the track at Morro Bay first. We, you know, we, we did the student services building there first. So we, we have purposely throughout this made sure that the coast feels like they are special and have been given priority and that they're not the stepsister and left out and those types of things. So I want to make sure that Scott has that and understands that message so that when things come up. So recently, like right now, we're looking at moving classes and trying to make things set up so that we can start the C classroom building. So, you know, that means a few teachers are gonna have to share classrooms. We're gonna have to make it work. And so, so a few teachers have come, Scott, well, how come Slow High gets all these temporary classrooms and and we don't? And why are we, you know, so it brings up that question. So I had to, Scott, I just want you to know, right? So Slow High has twice as many kids as Morro Bay High. And and they're also right now walking up the hill and using the adult school programs, right? I mean, it's not like they have it just so easy and it's so just so much better at Stanlis High School, right? So we're meeting with Scott and staff, laying out all the classrooms, making sure everything's works. But in the long run, if we can get those projects done quicker, it just means that kids and teachers are able to be in those new classrooms sooner, right? So it's gotta work. We have to have spaces for classes with kids. And so that, it's just Scott needs a, he needs to understand that as a new principle, right? Like this Measure D has been going and and he, he appreciated me, he appreciated it, talking to me. I'm meeting with him, Chris, Rick Simpson and Jeff next week to look at all the classrooms, make sure everybody's taken care of, right? And, you know, the, the message is a positive one about Measure D at all times, right? And, you know, how fortunate we are that the public has given us these funds to upgrade our school sites. So it's, it's good. The B Wing is almost ready to move in. I think it's done next week, so we'll be moving those Morro Bay teachers into that classroom building. And so it, you know, and if you've seen the quad, it looks great. It's, there's actually, again, you go on the Measure D website, they have a constant video of it to see. But all the, all of the concrete's in, you know, so kids next year in the fall, we're going to have that quad back. And it's getting, you know, new grass and plant areas and places to sit and, you know, it's real positive. The, the A building, the theater, multipurpose room, that's all gutted out. We'll be bringing the, the, the bids for it soon to the board in terms of that construction phase as they go through the plans. But it's, you know, it's all coming together in terms of just the way it looks. And I really like the way that it looks at at San Luis Obispo High School. So go ahead, Catherine? You muted Catherine.
I just have a request and which, which is that it is amazing. It's beautiful. It's wonderful. I can, I walk by it every day and I can walk through the campus and see the improvements that are being made. But I, I, I must ask you to please save as many trees as possible.
We're planting a tree for every tree that's taken down. We will plant another tree, just so you know. We will.
In, in the same location? Are we having the same locations?
Well, some of it can't be, right? So, so for, for example, like where the, where the bleachers were, we had those gigantic pine trees behind the bleachers.
Oh, right, yeah.
So like the bleachers are going to be where the pine trees are, right? Because we're shifting the whole field over. But, but probably, you know, through along the outline of the outside of the campus, I would envision, you know, trees along that back fence and, you know, throughout the quad area, you know, there's been a lot of. Yeah, there will be trees throughout the landscaping.
Good, because there were beautiful pepper trees that are not there anymore that were next to San Luis Drive, between San Luis Drive and the, and where the track would go. So I just want to be mindful of that because people are very protective of their trees.
Of course.
And also that, is that that scoreboard going to stay there at the end between San Luis Drive and the, and the track? And it looks like it's not going to be there altogether, which would be great, but.
But there's gonna be, there will be a scoreboard in that area.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's a new one or if they're leaving that one there, but there will be a scoreboard.
Okay.
They still have for football, for track, for, you know, all the different events, things.
Yeah, it's just that the location seems a little abrupt, you know, it kind of cuts off the end of the, the view from, but like it was what Eve was saying.
Yeah.
Begin to the campus. It's a beautiful campus and now you look past a scoreboard. I just had to share that with you. But it looks, it's amazing and I'm, you know, absolutely thrilled that it's coming to the conclusion because I know you are and so is everyone else.
Evelyn?
Ryan, I want to appreciate your focus on and being mindful of that interest into Morro Bay High School and that.
Oh, yeah.
Because I was there and, you know, you're, you're drawn right to that beautiful building and then, but as you're going there, I look to the left and I'm going. So I I appreciate that mindfulness of trying to make that entry just as, you know, beautiful and tight as we can, you know.
It's just with the Coastal Commission, it's, it's like we have to work with the city and, but we will, we'll clean it up. But, you know, we will, I'd love to like even every other tree, if they'll let us take out an old willow, put a new willow back, right? Like, well, you know, it could be the same exact tree and let it grow type of thing. And then maybe, you know, ten years from now, we can do the other ones or transition. But, you know, we have, they have birds that nest in those trees, right? So there's a lot that goes into, you know, our, our ability to change out trees or do things. And so we, we have to work with the city and the Coastal Commission on that, but we will.
Thank you.
But also, I think it, I, as I, I think I'm right about this, there, isn't there a hotel plan between the eastern side of the driveway?
On the right side, yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna, that's gonna change the whole look of the, of the entrance there. I mean, you gotta wonder what's going to happen to the old miniature golf course too.
I don't know if they, if they have funds or what they're gonna do with it.
I don't know.
So lastly, we're, um, you know, we are working with, with, with the wood shop there, Jed Bruington at Slow High, right? As well as Tim Fay with the, the welding shop. And so I have meetings with them on Friday. There's been a little bit of with C TIC funding and, you know, all the different CTE funds and Measure D and what they supply, those types of things. And so we've had those conversations with them. We're meeting again on Friday because we want to, again, we want to use all sources of funds, right? And save as much Measure D funds as possible so that we can make sure we, you know, do as many projects as possible. So I I've kind of inserted myself in that to make sure that this all works out well, that Tim and Jed have everything and and Anna and Jody there have everything they need, right? To run their classes for the future of the program. So, you know, we've had those conversations. I have another meeting on Friday. But we have, I've had a little bit of issues with some P O things and things not getting done between Slow Admin and that group. And so I'm making sure that that's all cleared up. Because there's no, again, this Measure D should be such a positive for everyone, including them, including kids, the community, right? So I just want to make sure that, you know, everyone appreciates all the things that are happening at their school sites for them. So Dr. Prater got to walk through Jed's classroom yesterday, wood shop, C T, I mean, just beautiful, right? Absolutely fantastic. Tim, Tim Fay's new architecture classroom and engineering classroom as well as welding. Those are all things that, I mean, it's, it will be great. And then we're going to jump right into the ag classrooms over the summer. So they'll start the demo there in fixing those up. So just a lot of positives. Catherine?
One more question about the pool. So with the pool at Slow High, do we have the same privileges for the public that Morro Bay High School pool is offering?
So Slow High Pool is a little different, right? In that it's, it's in the middle of the campus. So we'll just start there, right? It's very different term placement. So we have no, I have no problem with like somebody, you know, a, a community group or somebody renting out the pool and having swim lessons or doing things in the evening at Slow Pool. There's no reason why they can't or, or even us having swim lessons or free swim in the summertime with lifeguards. It's just getting that, getting, you know, what group is going to do that, I guess, is the question, right? That's not a function that the school district doesn't run that for groups. But there's plenty of, you know, whether it's the Seahawks or different, you know, agencies. I know at Arroy Gundy High School, when I was there, that are, are basically our, our students ran a summer swim program and had free swim and and it was a great fundraiser for the pool in the summertime. So that's definitely something that I think we can work towards and and move into and have some open swim time. You know, up, up until last month, we couldn't even swim in the pool ourselves, right? So it's a little, it's still a little fresh and new in terms of just our own kids being able to use it. And, and so I, I just, people have to be a little patient. I think as we, you know, move forward into the future, right? And figure out kind of what the, what the times will be and how this is going to work. But yeah, I, I, I would expect that it's going to expand in time. It's just figuring out who's gonna do that.
Well, and and just I would remind everybody who's watching, which I think is just the, just a bunch of us, that more the Morro Bay High School pool replaced the pool that was there years ago. That there was no, really no swimming pool on the coast other than Cuesta, you know? And I guess you could go up to Cayucas Elementary School, but that was a, you know, an elementary school pool. That the city of Morro Bay has been in partnership with us for these things because this is part of the city of Morro Bay's Recreation and Parks Department. And so we've all along, that, that's been part of the plan too. And, and I don't know if we've even had those relationships with the city of San Luis Obispo, considering that they've got Sensheimer School or Sensheimer Pool, which by the way, is on our property anyway. So, you know, it's kind of funny about that, isn't it?
But I can talk to them, Catherine, to see if they have an interest in having, you know, opening up a rec swim, running something at the nights, right? At Slow High Pool or the weekends type of thing. I have no problem with the city doing that. It's just whether they, whether they'll want to, since they already have a pool, that's a public pool that that's open. So I don't know what, what their use is. So I will tell you, it's really nice not to have to cater to their needs for our programs, right? That our kids can swim and and have, you know, water polo practice and those types of things and not have to, you know, kind of work around their schedule. So that, that's, you know, it's nice to have that priority for our kids, for sure. But I'll reach out to them. I'll talk to Megan and Greg Avicki in there and see what they, see if they have an interest in doing something.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah. So that's kind of, that's Measure D. We're, um, working on budgets right now. Again, as we, you know, we're, we're getting towards the end, right? I will tell you, we did put on the board meeting, you're gonna see in the consent agenda, a facility master plan update for us to move forward hopefully with that. So we got a great bid from P B K Architects who we're working with right now to move forward. It really half as much as we spent in two thousand fourteen with P M S M to update it. So I'm gonna, I'll, I'll put all the information about that in Friday notes this week so that you can, you know, read about it and kind of outline. And then I'm also going to put kind of a timeline that John Eisen put together for the board in regards to a potential future bond measure. So and critical to that is to have an updated facility master plan of what the needs are, right? In terms of what, what the board would decide to do or not do, kind of moving forward, so.
And Ryan, I just want to say also, I just want to appreciate the tour that you and Chris gave me yesterday of the Slow High Campus. And I just want to convey to the board how amazing that theater is, that theater space. And so when we do talk about high school and we get to that discussion of that grade span, I, and for that matter, middle school as well, I just think the visual and performing arts is a powerful way that kids find and seek their confidence and their identity in this world. And now we have a space, not just at Slow High, but one coming soon to Morro Bay High as well, that I am just so thrilled. There it is. That's the Slow High one. They're doing A P testing in there, which is why the tables are there. But when those seats come out and then you put the other seats in front, there's upwards of three hundred seat capacity. It is absolutely spectacular. And I happen to come from a district where performing arts, visual and performing arts was a priority. And I can tell you, it shapes a school and community culture when those are priorities. And so I'm super thrilled that we're doing this at both of our comprehensive high schools through Measure D. I just think it, it reflects a, a core value of our community and certainly our district. And, and, you know, as Ryan talks about a future bond campaign to do elementary and middle schools, I also want to throw out this in advance that we're, we're missing a big chunk of capturing kids' interest and engagement through the visual and performing arts by not really having a space dedicated to that endeavor. And our music programs are building, they're growing year by year. Now, take COVID out, but prior to COVID, our band, our music programs were thriving and growing. And because we put our focus there. And I would argue when you put your focus on the vision. And I would argue, when you put your focus on the visual and performing arts as well, you, you capture a whole nother group of students. And, and in our district, I, I'm just looking around at our community, it's an artistic community. It is socially relevant to have this type of, of engine underneath the hood. And I think we can do, we can move the needle considerably with regard to the arts, the humanities, by really investing in that K-8, K-12. And so for that, I just want to kind of put my plug in there for it. So there you have it. Thank you.
And I reminded Scott that his bandroom is much nicer than Slow High's bandroom. But it's still really nice to San Luis High. There's just certain facilities, right? When you modernize, some things are gonna be, you know, you know, like their J-Wing, the huge space, the, the room that they have, it's as, as nice as it is in the wood shop or welding shop at Slow High, it's just, it's not the same, right? So there's, there's certain things that throughout this, even though the facilities will be equal and they're, you know, have great facilities, there, there are little things that, that are different between the two, right? So, and that's just, unless you leveled everything and built the same exact school back, that you're gonna have a little bit of that. So, so that's kind of my update. We'll, we'll continue on the path, and I'll share everything in Friday notes for the board. You know, some of these, um, new thoughts along with the budget and everything else that we have going on. It'll be a busy, busy board meeting, a lot of information for you to take in.
Anything else for the good of the cause, everyone? Well, thank you. I guess we're adjourned until Tuesday at, what time, Dr. Prater?
Closed session is at four, and we open at five, and we come right out into open session with CVRA discussions. Actually, with the Los Rancho's highlight, because we missed those guys last time.
And make those five-year-olds wait.
We can't make the five-year-olds wait. So we'll start with the Los Rancho's highlight and go right into the CVRA map, draft map discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. All right, everybody. We'll see you Tuesday. Thank you.
One more thing?
Yes, 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 yes.
The Tribune just sent me a notice that the whole area mapping by trustee area as opposed to enlarge with you having been interviewed, Mr. Ungru, that just came out. So we'll probably have a lot more of the public participating.
Good, well, that, yeah, when, when she and I, when Mackenzie and I talked, I guess it was last week, one of her questions for me was, why is this important and why is it important that, that the public be involved in it? And so that's one, one of the things that she and I talked about, so I hope so. Because this is, this is one of the most important things we're, we're gonna do. I think this is one of the most important things I've done in my 20 years on the board. So, thanks. Thanks for sharing that with me. I was wondering when that was coming out.
It's out.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Thanks.
I'll check that out right now.
All right.